I looked for an apartment and um I was apprehensive about living in affordable rent apartments, but that's all I could afford and I just want to tell you um how at peace I feel with my decision. To my surprise, to be quite honest, I was uh thinking there would be a lot of crime, it would be noisy. My neighbors would be disrespectful. I I didn't know what to expect, to be quite honest, but I knew it wouldn't be good if it was affordable rent. I knew that um but I'm was absolutely amazed. My neighbors are are flat out amazing. Um there's an owner of a landscaping business here. There is an operator owner of a wildflower seed farm. There is a dental hygienist, a family where the dad restores classic big living room sized cars and resells them, a mother with a brilliant son who plays the violin. A family who owns a small restaurant, a small restaurant. And most all of them either have disabilities or family members with disabilities. And some of the rents here are they go up to fifteen hundred dollars. They're one bedrooms for nine hundred dollars. You know, I mean, people, I I thought, oh, it's gonna be real cheap, you know? I didn't, I I really didn't know what to think, but um it isn't that. And then I I've been delighted as I've been in Madison and working with developing these working on the Community Development Authority Board for so long, seeing how it really helps communities to have affordable rent, especially nowadays and especially in Dane County. Our rents and our housing is so high here and availability is so low. And more and more seniors, I mean, I worked full time for decades of my life, but all in nonprofits. And I live on very little um social security. I just didn't plan properly and I didn't expect my my husband to pass away as early as he did and um. I I just want you to know that we're this place where I live is Penny Lane Apartments, right across from the new Penny Library. That's um right off of Cottage Grove Road. And um I have friends that live in Cottage Grove and love it there and um I love visiting there and I my doctor's there and I do shopping there and um. We're good neighbors and you know, there've even been Harvard studies that have shown that property values don't go down with uh affordable housing. It's kind of a surprise to a lot of people, but it's true. And it certainly is an asset to an ever aging uh group of people. I'm sure I'm not the only one that didn't plan ahead thinking that social security, I'll have it made. I've worked decades and decades, you know, hey, I have it made. Um I have social security, been paying in um and to find out I could not possibly have lived anywhere near Dane County without affordable housing. So I just and and kids of all ages, all races, all play together. And if somebody and they're like racing around, competing, and as soon as somebody falls and cuts their their knee, everybody's around them. What can we do to help? And when COVID hit, I'm older and I have two underlying conditions and I'm a great grandma and I had neighbors knocking at my door asking if they could go shopping for me or what they can do for me. Anybody asks anybody here to help them, they'll say yes or no, you know, and uh we have a quadriplegic man here. Brilliant. Love having conversations with him. So I I just wanted to say that and say, I I really think um I just wanted to say what an asset I think moving out and their property would be. And you don't have affordable rent of places for people to live there and it might be a good thing. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Shouldn't lie anybody waving at me. All right. We'll move on then. Excuse me to uh discuss and consider the meeting minutes from our regular board meeting from September eighth. Any comments on the meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have first and second then to approve the meeting minutes. Any further discussion? Having heard not all those in favor.
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? These abstained. Motion carries. All right, we move on then to uh first item. Presentations to board update on the website redesign. Uh Lisa, are you going to take lead on this?
Yep, I am, and I'm going to share my screen, so let me know if you're seeing the new website.
We have your screen.
All right, so I'm not going to be able to click into the interior pages, but what I am going to share with you is the homepage of the new website. And you will see a new color scheme that is a little bit more modern than what we currently have. You will also see some quick links here to some of our most popular departments. So we tried to front load the page so that it was more user friendly. You will notice that with the big search bar in the middle of the screen, which I think people will find very helpful because they can put anything they want in there and search our website. The top here with our main menu, you'll see it is pretty much the same um with the quick download of what's under each of those departments. And then as we scroll down, you'll see these um action buttons that they can click in to go right to permits or to log into Parks and Rec, um agendas and minutes and uh notifications. So we think that will be more helpful than the sticky notes that used to be on the left hand side of the screen. And then as we scroll down, we have more of our departments where you can click into them. I would click in, but it would throw me out of this page, but it'll give us to the interior pages um that would have that information for each of that department. So that's a new feature. And then we go to something that looks a little bit different than what we currently have. Um this would be what would be normally our news flash section is now the news and announcements. And so you can see our current news flashes that we have up um which I think draws your attention a little bit more than on the side. And then you can click to see other news as well. And then as we scroll down, we have our calendars and it will show the village calendar um with all of the meetings. And then the next, well, this actually would be events, but we don't have anything really posted at there at this time um just because COVID and other things going on. So then we have the meetings um and then we have Parks and Rec calendar. So um looks just a little bit different than what we currently have, but still very accessible. And then on the bottom portion, we have our social media um which has a live feed to our Facebook page for the village. Um our video tours, uh which I believe we're working on getting those um updated. And then our other social media that we would have would uh be in this section. And then as we scroll down, we still have um our contact information, our hours, our quick links and the site link. So that is just a quick tour of what the new website is going to look like in the color scheme and the modern updates and how it's going to function. We're looking at the the website redesign team will be meeting um in the next week or so to go through the pages and look if we have anything that we want to change before we go live, but we're anticipated that our new website will go live on October twelve. So I, if you have any questions, be happy to answer, but that's kind of the quick overview.
Thanks, Lisa. Looks good. Uh any question from board members?
No, that's really cool. I think it seems very accessible and easy to use, uh which is going to make a diff- a big difference, I think. Not not that the old one wasn't, but this seems a lot easier.
Yeah, that was our focus was to front load it so that it was, you know, the things that people use the most were the most accessible.
All right. Any other questions or comments from board members? All right. Thanks, Lisa. Looking forward to when it's done. Uh then we'll move on to uh new business. Uh first one under new business is the annual review of the Village Consultant Service Providers. We've had a few of these already. This evening we'll have Ellers. I believe Jonathan's on from Ellers.
I'm here. Uh is it helpful if I um share my screen and share the couple slides here?
If you want to share, we'll we'll definitely take a look at it.
Okay, great. Um so yeah, I'm Jonathan Chats. I'm a financial specialist with Ellers and seen most of you before. I know you're used to working with Greg, who's unavailable tonight. But just a quick uh overview here of of Ellers and then on the next slide, I'll talk a bit more about the specifics with the village. So um Ellers is an independent municipal advisor. We have uh been doing work for communities uh in Wisconsin since nineteen fifty-five. I think uh trying to underscore the independence is that we we only work with uh public sector municipal clients on on debt issuance and and uh uh debt transactions. We don't work for uh underwriters, we don't work with underwriters uh or brokers uh on the economic development side. We don't work with or represent developers or any private sector parties. We only work on the the public side of the table. Uh additionally, I think this is a good opportunity to to sort of show off that uh we we also offer a fully integrated uh services platform. So if you can see on the right here, you all in the middle of uh of our our platform and uh and sort of a comprehensive uh municipal finance service uh array around just so um as as we've uh worked with the village, uh we've also developed and rounded out our services uh and been able to grow those uh so that we can help out the village in in more and different uh ways. And and so uh I wanted to talk specifically here on the next page about specific services that we provide to the village. So um we're honored to be the the village's municipal advisor. Um and we've had, we've had a great relationship. I've only been um uh with you guys for two and a half years. I know Greg longer than that, but uh we we serve the the village in uh economic development consulting. Uh recently, that's been uh pro forma review, uh representing uh economic development transactions on uh the village's behalf. Uh also, we we serve in um TIF creation amendments uh and general consulting around uh tax increment financing. We also uh do the financial management planning, which uh we've done. So this is the fifth year, uh so four updates after the creation year. And so that'll be coming up shortly. Debt planning and issuance, uh myself and Greg, uh we um provide advice and uh planning, modeling and and other supports uh to village staff in 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 uh preparation for debt issuance. And then we also conduct competitive sales on the village's behalf. Um I know that the village also works with our investment team on uh funding the best ways to uh to invest funds uh both in a, you know, advantageous way, but also uh in a compliant way. I know sometime, uh I recently, the village has used our arbitrage consulting uh team, which uh works on making sure that village uh borrowed funds are compliant with the IRS in terms of uh investment yields. And then uh our paying agent service, this is uh something that we offer uh all of our debt issuance clients to uh to help to ensure that uh debt service payments are not missed, are not late uh as well as to uh ensure that uh there are no snags when when there are term bonds, which is the typical time when paying agents are used. And then also the village uh uses Ellers as a dissemination agent for continuing disclosure, which is a requirement for all uh secure municipal securities. And uh we provide ongoing um disclosure updates to the MSA system as well as provide a report to the village every year on um, you know, what disclosures have been made or and 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 then keep the village up to date in terms of compliance there. So so though Greg, Greg and I are typically the points of contact uh with the village. Uh there are a number of people here in the Wisconsin office as well as uh in our Minnesota office who um helped to support the village in a in a whole variety of ways and kind of getting back to that that uh that graphic on the the last page. You know, we like to think of it as anything that has any kind of uh financial impact or involves dollars in any way. You know, we're able to support uh through one of the various uh services that we provide. So I'd be happy to um insert any questions, but uh just know that we're we're very grateful and honored to be able to uh to serve the village.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions for for Jonathan?
Uh this is Heidi. I just wanted to provide a couple of comments, but I appreciate all of the analysis and reporting um that you provide for us to help us make decisions, the overviews, give a good snapshot. There's always additional details um that provide backup um and additional information if needed. So thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan, just real quick, I got a couple of questions. Um what is the typical size of the communities you you're is Ellers working with?
Yeah, we're we so I can remember, I think so we're we're work with twelve hundred communities uh across our various markets. So that's again, Wisconsin, Minnesota, uh Colorado, Illinois and Kansas. And um in Wisconsin, I would say that we run run the range of uh, you know, five hundred person townships or villages uh up to, you know, some of the larger uh cities in the states. Companywide, you know, we 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 serve as municipal advisor for cities such as Minneapolis and and others. So we really do try to run run the entire array of of large and small communities.
Right. Uh you checked off the other couple of questions I have with that answer. Thank you.
Perfect.
Well done. Any other, any other questions or comments for Jonathan uh in the Ellers team? All right. Thanks again, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Uh item B then under new business is discuss and consider directing staff to send out an request for proposals for engineering services. This is a spin out of our last meeting. Was asked if this be agenda item. I know that Joe DeYoung is on from MSA and so is Kevin. Uh and I know Joe had asked to speak uh on behalf of MSA. So I guess we'll let him speak before the board um discusses this item.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it, John. Um again, my name is Joe DeYoung, MSA Professional Services, and I haven't had any real direct contact. I was at the last meeting and unfortunately I had to get to another location and tried calling in with my cellphone, but unfortunately it was there about halfway through. So I apologize for that, but um again, I appreciate the chance to talk today and have an opportunity. I think a lot of it has in the agenda item here is that we do acknowledge that there's been some concerns in the past year that have been brought up and has been brought to our attention. I think it's fair to uh assume that we've heard them and um hopefully seen that some of them are being addressed or at least being discussed. So um again, we do see that and acknowledge it and understand why um this discussion might be here tonight. Moving ahead though, I hope, like you said, that Kevin um and the rest of the staff, and I guess I want to point that out is that we've had a long history and very appreciative history with the village home for a long period of time. And that the staff that's here wasn't just about one person. There's a lot of people that have been working behind the scenes and helping you all along with Kevin and that some of the things that we found out after the fact um of staff leaving has left us in a spot where we are um improving and wanting to improve with you. With that being said, I I do want the opportunity, hopefully, and I request I'd love for Kevin to have a chance to see what he can do from beginning to end from a project. And I say that not as necessarily that it's old or anything like that, but I do think um Kevin brings something to the table that's very upfront, very straightforward. And um and like you said, I hope that you see that when I've heard about him and worked with him over the all the years that he's been with MSA. I I do think he brings something that I think is going to be different than what you experienced in the past and something that would hopefully be beneficial to the village and to MSA. So a lot of projects inherited, but with going ahead with the Drummond Glacier Drummond Path, um bus road and Highway BB project, Bielis Road and some of the jazz and things that are going on currently that we have. I I think really got a big year coming up and stuff that's going on that I sure hope that we have a chance to prove ourselves and show you that uh we're not complacent and want to provide the services that you come to expect from MSA. Again, uh there's a lot going on and um I I think we have a bright future um in the village and want to be a part of it. And again, I do appreciate the time to at least talk and be here for questions. And Kevin's here as well as myself, like I said, with this discussion. We'd be happy to answer anything we can for you guys.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Um I don't know if the board has any questions for either Joe or Kevin at this time. Turn it over to you.
Um this is Melissa. Um I I think it's too soon to go out for an RFP. I was frustrated with um MSA at the beginning of the year. But I do feel like Kevin deserves an opportunity. I think that he has shown that he um is um doing his best to to jump into a situation that maybe wasn't of his control and he's um working on learning our community and working with our department heads and um I kind of feel like the um MSA is on probation right now and I want to see what happens going forward. So I think it's too soon to do this right now.
All right. Thanks, Melissa. Other comments from board members or general discussion? Particularly any questions for Joe or Kevin at this point? And then we can get in discussion.
If I can ask, uh do you feel like the projects we have going on in the village are more difficult than other projects your organization deals with? We've had a a number, um more than a handful of projects that numbers have been, you know, not five percent off, but you know, fifteen, twenty percent off. We we do our planning based on those numbers and and I'm just trying to figure out why it's gone awry uh in in the last, really in the last couple of years. And 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 if these projects are are too difficult for the organization or if there's a lack of attention to detail, uh it's a concern.
And again, this is, Kevin, if you want me to take first crack at this, is that okay or?
Well, I was just gonna say, I was just gonna let Troy know too that I I don't think by any stretch these are too difficult for um we do much larger projects overall and um I can let Joe jump in too, but to me it's it just starts with communication, you know, working with the committees. There's a lot of things going on with uh the bus road and BB project, for for example, as to funding and different things, but it it starts with communication and you know, it's not something I do on my own. Obviously, I I try to get the parties involved um and then got a, you know, staff behind me that helps me and everything like that, but you know, keeping things moving and the communication up front is a big part of it. So Joe, is there anything you can add, anything as well? So.
No, I I think you nailed it because that's exactly what I was gonna say is that I think the lack of communication before was the biggest concern that maybe was experienced in this case. Um when it comes to projects, the MSA, no, a a small project to large projects. We've done them all throughout Wisconsin, so I don't see that as the concern at all. It was more the fact that things have changed in the bid climate all the time. Can we even experience it this year with COVID and how things change so fast? With the concern of supplies, then the lack of work and where things are. So it's one of the things that bidding will change throughout, but if we're not communicating with you from beginning to end, um that's where I feel that are one of our biggest concerns that we have to address going forward is that working with you in the front and being upfront with the cost and giving you updates as we go through for you guys to have the ability to plan for it and um educate yourselves is one of the things that we really want to work on in twenty twenty and the rest of twenty-one. Um so I don't think the complications there at all. I do think that at least the way we feel and Kevin said the same thing, it was more of not being there to update you on a timely manner that allowed you guys to make better decisions is what I was um concerned about when I heard some of these things that were going on. And it's just to be upfront with what we think.
Has has the has the uh lack of communication, is that come from uh the village's part? Is that from MSA's part? I guess I I understand what you're saying and I appreciate the comments and and stuff. But if there's a problem of communication, what do we need to do better to to fix that if if indeed the problem is in our end?
And Kevin, I'm gonna answer this for you because I'll be upfront. The the issue on my end was it would belong to MSA. I don't think there is meetings and stuff that was going on, but I don't know if communication was getting back. I will tell you this about Kevin Lord is that there will not be a lack of communication because Kevin is one of the guys that he knows and what he knows upfront, he will be telling you firsthand. He, like I said, the communities he's worked in and the follow up that we have, that I do think you'll see a difference in communication going forward with your new client liaison that um it's, we're not gonna hide behind anything. It's not, it is what it is. Good news or bad news, you will know as soon as he knows. That's just type of guy he is. So I will say that to me and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the ownership belongs to us and that we can always work on communicating better with the village and the village with us, but I think it's improved a lot with Kevin and involvement with the staff since um the change over in twenty twenty. So I I do see it improving from there.
Thanks, Joe. I guess I would, the only thing I would add, Troy, is I agree. I I think it's more on us and I I feel like that staff has been great to work with since I've been there and I don't know if um you know, how all the meetings went before that and if there was meetings about things, but uh I try to be open with, you know, when I get emails regarding developments and stuff and I I, you know, I I get those to Aaron and Matt and ask the questions right upfront before just you know, approving anything or or going forward. Um we kind of have a between the attorneys and JJ and and staff at Village Hall, just kind of a group that basically makes sure everybody's on the same page before we go forward with anything. So I I can't say a hundred percent what was all there before, obviously, but it seems like right now everybody's like pretty much on the same page and are um kind of a development crew or whatever um going forward. So I I feel like it's going in the right direction.
All right. I I want to thank you both.
So going off of Troy, what you were just saying, are 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 there any issues with jobs that Kevin has been, that you've been involved with Kevin that we know of? I mean, to me, it seems like stuff that was prior to you coming along. Is that correct or has there been some that have been so recent? Because you haven't been there that long or haven't been with us that long?
No, most of them, I mean, most of them, the estimates, I I think all of them, the estimates came prior to me being the one to explain them to you guys and deliver them. I was at MSA at the time, so I'm, you know, may have worked partially on some of them at some point, but as far as communicating to the village costs and different things, um I think the only one we've done since I've been there from start to finish was a uh working with JJ on the Park Street Mill and Overlay, which is a very minimal project, obviously, compared to any of these others. So to be quite honest, the Glacier Drummond Trail and and Bus Road and BB technically have been ongoing prior to me being there as well, but we're diving, obviously, into the details of things and everything a lot more right now. But we're diving obviously into the details of things and everything a lot more right now and don't have anything finalized. So I'll be continually sharing those as well with the committees and everything as well.
I would say I'd be aligned with Melissa's comments earlier about a probationary period. I appreciate the level of ownership, sounds like in terms of past culpability with MSA. And Kevin, you know, in your role, developing that level of is important. The question that I would have, it's my understanding that we get to have you some expectation.
Paul's on the move.
Having that new four season porch out there, bad wifi. So I don't know, did you catch anything that I said?
It was pretty broken up, Paul. I think you better give it again.
Yeah, I'll give it another shot here. I was gonna say, I'm aligned with Melissa's earlier comments about potentially probationary period. I appreciate the ownership of MSA, you know, in terms of that, you know, past level culpability. And Kevin's role, you know, we're already seeing it in terms of developing that trust in the village again. The question that I would have is that it's my understanding, we don't have a contractual agreement or MOU in place. Is that something that should be considered, you know, moving forward for that level of communication that we're talking about in terms of expectation?
Again, I guess we can look into what we have under contract, but I guess the expectation of what we're required to provide you is really up to you as a board that we're gonna hold ourselves accountable to your expectations, hopefully. I think the communication is one thing that I don't seek put into contracts so much, but I think the improvements in talking more frequently to you is what I'm hoping to get out of this. If there's something we can look into with Matt, I'd be happy to pull that up and try and work with him and try and come up with a way to do that. But I think our expectation is going to be of how to move forward and provide a quality of service that you come to expect and want from MSA. So if there's something you want us to look into, I'd be happy to with Matt and we can follow up again in a future meeting.
Yeah, I've never looked in the, in regarding the past, but I'm assuming there's a, we were under basically a general contract with the village. It's probably some years old, I'm taking a wild guess. And yeah, it's not something that comes before the village every year or anything like that. And then we just work with staff on specific task orders. But I'm not sure when the last time that's been updated or looked at or anything.
So we did a little research, like you were suggesting, Kevin, it's, if there is something, it's over 20 some years old and everything's been handled on just a project by project basis. And I think that's in general what the village prefers with, with our consultants. We generally do not have a actual contract. If there's anything, it's a pretty modest, you know, one page, one page agreement essentially. Laying out that consultant works at the pleasure of the village board and that's pretty much it. But if the board desires more than that, we can look into that.
Thanks, Matt. Any further comments from board members or thoughts on having some sort of expectations document? As Matt said, you know, we do it project by project. It does afford the village to be at will with, with the, with the engineering firm and other services that we provide, we get from other providers. But if the board feels strong, we can certainly look into something like that. It's almost like a quality agreement or something of that sort where you're just laying out the expectations. Any thoughts from the board members on that?
This is Heidi. I guess I'm not opposed to that, but I think we've been pretty clear on what our expectations are moving forward and what we want to see improve and what we're looking for in the next year of service. So I guess I'm, I'm not really strong one way or the other on documenting that.
I don't think it's really that necessary. I'm with Heidi on that one.
Yeah, and me being the one that brought it up, again, me being still relatively new, you know, I didn't know if that was something that we've done with others. And if not, and we fully understand the expectation moving forward, you know, I wouldn't see a problem with it either. I'm not having it.
Thanks, Paul. Any other comments from board members or really or questions right now for Kevin or Joe? Otherwise we'll move to the second part of this then. And it's really about the agenda item is whether or not we want to explore an RFP process at this time, or I think it's been said at least by a few or four board members that the expectation is that the engineering firm is kind of on probation right now. We're just waiting to see how Kevin kind of flows through the projects that are coming up and that he has and how the rest of the team at MSA performs behind him. So any further discussion on the agenda item?
I'll do a motion to table.
Okay. Second from Sarah, first from Melissa. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody have a say in? Motion carries. All right. Thanks again, Kevin and Joe, for your comments and taking questions.
Thanks, guys.
And so then we will move on then to reports from village board, commissions and committees. The first one is the finance and personnel committee. We must have missed an item or this is coming back up through the schedule. Cause we had this, this meeting covered the, at least the 24th, August 24th finance meeting. On our eighth, our September 8th village board meeting. But there is a discussing, consider update to the financial management, management plan for the years 2021 through 2025. And we want to walk through with, I don't know if Jonathan's still on, walk through any of the items provided from, from elders?
Yeah, I think Jonathan's gonna go through a presentation. As far as the item wasn't, wasn't missed, you know, we covered the update from the committee. But we like to give a little bit of extra time to make sure that all the updates and, and wait for estimates to come in. So we can get a little bit further into the budget process before finalizing the update. So we're just looking to get towards, towards the end of September before doing that, since we, the bulk of the budget discussions don't occur till October. So just trying to set the timeline up appropriately. But with that, yeah, I can turn over to Jonathan. He's gonna go over a little bit more of a reduced presentation than the one that was presented to the finance committee. But it incorporates all the updates that were discussed at the finance committee. And this is just a chance for the board to hear it and, and certainly have any discussion about if there's any items that the board would like to see removed, added or, or shifted to a different year. But ultimately this is just focusing on an update to the plan that's been established.
All right. Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and share that again. Yeah, so appreciate the feedback from the committee. So we're not gonna go through this as fine grained as we, as we had there. This will be mostly familiar. As I mentioned earlier, this is the, the fifth iteration or fourth update that we've done for the financial management plan. And I communicated to Matt earlier that this is, you know, this is the right way to do it in terms of having this inform the budget process. And so this timing seems to work out. So again, this is, this FMP is, is meant to be an all-in scenario in which the, the village is looking at, at the impacts of, you know, financing operations as ongoing and, and the capital plan as fully funded. So so the, the most recent S and P rating report, which was from May, maintained that double A rating. And again, just some of the overviews on this slide, talking about a strong financial management, diverse economy and strong growth. And then of course, a good fund balance at 32% of operating expenditures. And you'll see, this slide just talks about the different fund balance components. But the village's fund balance policy shows, you know, that the combined unassigned and assigned fund balance needs to be in a range of 20 to 30%. So you're exceeding that, your own policy, which is great. And this next slide shows the, just visually how the fund balance in the general fund has increased. Again, this is not just, it is, it is a very important metric for the rating agency, but also just a great, great measure for financial health and, you know, financial position going forward. So good to see that increasing the way it is. So, so when we build the model, we forecast out each line item in your budget going forward. And these are the different codes we use to show different, different types of increases. Obviously things like operating supplies and professional services may not have the type of increase that, that some other codes would have. We have the ability to manually increase them as well by different percentages or dollar amounts or things like that, just working with, with staff to identify where that might be necessary. But this is an overview of basically how we categorize different, different line items. And one update to this slide is that from the committee is that the school resource officer had been eliminated. The revenue had been eliminated from the budget projection starting in 2021. That's now 50% eliminated. So these are the, the fun tabs that all of our, our data in the model rolls up to. And so you can see general fund here and how the levy changes year to year and how we're projecting out different expenditure lines. And then we've also included this sort of future FTE category at the bottom after feedback in the committee just to kind of show what it would look like if you did add a little bit of personnel as well. Next is the street tree fund. So we showed this built out through 2025 and we show this as a balanced budget. So you can see that after the 2020 year, we just show it as a zero net change balanced budget. This is the capital plan for the parks department, parks improvement. So you can see up top the, the different projects that we've received from, from staff and then estimated cost, how it would be funded and then now the years where it would be funded and down at the bottom, we, we just summarize the different funding sources. So some projects identified as being funded by a park development fund and then obviously the borrowing components. So that all pulled together in a few slides for, for how the borrowing would size up. This is the park development fund again, just showing the projects that were identified in the, in the previous slide and then how they impact the, the fund balance going forward. This is the capital fund. And again, this is just looking at the equipment, vehicles, other equipment and other capital projects that are put together by, I'm sorry, that are funded an ongoing basis. This is a schedule that we received from, from staff. So we just show how, how it's, how, how it's funded as far as some fund balance and, and the levy going forward. You can see the levy, you know, increasing up to the 650 mark and then stabilizing. And you'll see on the levy component page how that kind of ties together with the rest of the funds. This is the public works capital plan, same as the parks where we have the schedule on top and the funding sources on the bottom. There's an alternative scenario in which the, we show the, the funding of the Glacial Drummond Bike Path project, this behemoth here in, in two different ways. So the first, the first way I'll show you upcoming has all of it funded in 2021. And the second way is to show it how it would look if we phased it out over a couple of years. So this is the sizing financing plan. So on the top here, we have the parks capital projects that were identified in, in a couple of slides ago. And on the bottom here are the public works projects and then some estimated issuance expenses. So you can see the timing and total for borrowing over the next several years to fully fund, again, fully funding the capital improvements plan. And then this next slide looks at the, the levy impact of those borrowings. So your existing debt profile is broken down here on the left. And then the future borrowing in the middle here, you'll notice that 10, 10 is expected to pay for one of those borrowings that was built in here so that have some offsetting revenue. And then you can see the, the levy impact of those borrowings each year. So we typically like to structure it so that you have kind of consistent increases in your levy as you're funding the plan. So this sort of 115 to $110,000 increases each year. And then once the fan, the plan is, new borrowings are completed, we want to show the levy dropping off from there. So that's, that's the structure that we have here. You'll see that, that first, this first scenario where we show the, that Glacial Drummond project fully funded in 2021. The increase is sort of topped out here at 1, 1,290 for debt service levy. And I'll show that, how that, how that's different on the next scenario. This is your debt service capacity analysis. So again, your existing debt service profile on the left and those capacity numbers. And then building in those proposed capital improvement plan borrowings and how that impacts the, the capacity each year. Obviously the village has plenty of debt service capacity. So it's in a really good position in that regard. This next slide, we look at the tax levy and rate summary. So on the top, these are the different funds that we've just looked at and how the levy changes over the years that we've projected. And then on the bottom, it's showing the total levy and how that changes as a percentage each year. And then below that, we, we show a projection of assessed value. So obviously it's a little bit, it's easier to understand how the assessed value numbers help to drive the tax rate. So we, we show that in 2021, the village revaluing to get up to that 100% ratio. And then we just show it dropping off a bit each year. But that, that would show how that will impact the assessed tax rate for the village. And then again, on the bottom here, we have this quick analysis to show what those tax rates, how they would impact a $250,000 home in 2020 and then a $300,000 home in 2021 and beyond. And so here's the, here's where it all comes together. This is the, the different levy components here in the, in the different colors. And you have the dollar amounts and the tax rates as well. And those tax rates are calculated against the assessed value that we showed you on the last page. So you can see the totals all the way in the right here in these graphs that show the levy on this left side graph and the rate. You can see the levy, you know, kind of steadily increasing as, you know, new debt and new other expenditures and, and sort of the growth that we built into the assumptions of the model. But then you can see on the, on the rate side, things are relatively flat. That's, you know, due to the, the increased growth in, in assessed value for the village. So this, so this next slide is a projection of levy limits. So the village's levy limit, obviously, there's lots of cushion right now. I will show you, let's see, this line right here, which is the key to look at, is unused exceeded levy. So there's unused levy capacity that the village has a lot right now. And for these next few years, projecting that there's a lot of unused capacity. And we show that that's, you know, on in a couple of years, kind of farther out. It's something that we would want to keep an eye on to make sure that that doesn't become a problem as the model suggests. But obviously, we're being proactive by having this model built in the first place to to look at these things. So these last few slides for the for the fund overviews are just looking at that financing plan with the Glacial Drummond project split up over a couple of years. So you see that here, half in twenty twenty one, half in twenty twenty two. Everything else is the same as as I showed you before. And and so the impact is that, again, we show you the levy increase is a little bit lower each year of the plan. So it's it's lower by, you know, so if we were going at two hundred and ten, hundred and fifteen thousand, now we're more like ninety, ninety thousand or a little bit lower. Obviously, this first year is different. And then that peak year for the debt service levy, we'd showed that at what? One million, two ninety before, now it's peaking at one million, one eighty two. So just showing the kind of difference of the different options for approaching the major capital borrowing there. And again, this, this is just another capacity slide. So so that's it for the 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 general portion of the funds. And then we wanted to quickly look at your TIDS. Do a quick update with those. So TID five, the expenditure period actually ends next year. This has been extremely successful and and is is generating positive cash flow, expected to close in twenty twenty six. And the village has been extremely successful at at funding infrastructure improvements and providing development incentives to show, you know, obviously, bring in the economic development projects there. This is a breakdown of the expected development. So you can see there's still additional expected development in this district over the next few years that is broken down into these various projects. And that is driving the creation of tax increments. So this is a cash flow for the district. On the left side, you see the tax increments being generated over time as that development grows. And then the associated payout of municipal obligations and incentives here and some debt. And the, as as I noted on the first slide, expecting this this district to be able to close in twenty twenty six. TID six expenditure period ended last year. It is currently not generating sufficient increment to pay debt service. So our, the plan that we showed you above actually incorporates tax levy supporting the debt in this in this district. TID seven, the expenditure period again ended last year and is expected to close in twenty twenty three. There's just the one municipal revenue obligation on that being paid out. And this is just a quick cash flow update for District Seven. Again, I see that MRO being paid here as well as some of the other debt associated with the district, but that that's all expected to be able to pay off and be closed in twenty twenty three. And then the other three districts that have been created, TID eight, TID nine and TID ten, all the works, those were created in twenty eighteen. They're all, they, two of them have have not created positive increment. One of them, TID nine, has created positive increment as of one, one, twenty twenty. And obviously, plenty going on there. So that's it. There it is. That's that's the the F M P for this year. Happy to take questions. And just want to thank the village staff for for all the hard work and and again, collaboration for putting this together.
All right, any questions from from Jonathan?
This is Melissa. I have a couple. So you, like on page nineteen, it shows that in twenty twenty to twenty twenty one, the unused or exceeded levy line shows like three hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars of unused levy?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, sorry, go ahead.
So. So that's if we keep our amount at the four point four or five nine rather than the four point eight that we could go up to in taxes?
Yes, and let me quick explain the the sort of differentiation there, which is that this unused levy capacity, it it has a lot to do with your your geo debt. So up here on line three, it shows the prior year geo debt amount that you are claiming in as adjustment. And I'm sorry, that's the previous year. So down here on on line nine, this is your adjustment for geo debt. So the village has the option, you know, you're able to adjust your levy limit by all of the geo debt payment that you have outstanding for any in the individual year. However, a good chunk of that debt is abated by TID and other revenue sources. And so you typically don't do that just because you're you don't need to levy that amount because obviously, you're you're having that debt paid from other sources. So this amount, these unused capacity, what it's really showing is that there's there's an amount that you could go and use if you wanted to because some of the debt is being invaded by other sources. And and so that's why that that exists.
Okay, and so that's something that you were indicating we want to watch for future years because we could get into a pickle then?
Yes, and again, you know, with these out years showing negative numbers, there's obviously a huge amount of assumptions that are built into this that may or may not become a reality. But that's why I say just watching it, just making sure that, you know, as things, as these years come by, that we kind of keep an eye to make sure that there's there's a bit of cushion there because, you know, you want to be able to keep that. I mean, we always tell communities that this this dollar amount is something it can be, it can be tapped into in an emergency to pay for capital things and and capital items and other things that you may need. But, you know, that you want to make sure that there is some cushion available.
So next year, for sure, we're definitely going to want to really be aware of that because otherwise, it looks like we don't have much.
Right.
To play with.
So, right, exactly. So that that's something that we'll want to just update. And, you know, we'll obviously be talking to Matt and so on.
Okay, and then my other question is, if if the community chose to build a library in, say, twenty twenty five, what capacity does the village have to borrow for that?
All right, so then I want to look at the debt limit capacity. And twenty twenty five, we're showing the village is using forty two percent of its geo debt capacity, leaving twenty eight million dollars in unused capacity. So that being said, I I wouldn't, you know, there's there's certainly limits to this, this number. So the the credit rating agencies are going to look at this every time you do a borrowing and say, okay, if you're, you know, if you're at fifty percent, you know, fine. If you're at, you know, fifty five, sixty, whatever, whatever percent you're at, once it starts to sneak up a little bit too high, they're going to start to raise some some concerns. They always want to show that there's there's capacity, again, for emergencies and otherwise or or, you know, just showing that you're not spending out of control. But but yes, so in twenty twenty five, we're just showing that forty two percent capacity used if if all, everything else in this list is funded and and that twenty remaining.
It's just like a credit card. You start getting up there, your credit limit goes down.
Exactly, exactly right.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you so much.
Sure, of course.
Other questions for Jonathan?
Jonathan, quick question. This is Sarah Valencia. To on that same page where you're at, you've mentioned if it gets too high, they start to question. Can you remind me what that creeping to to too high number is? What are we talking that they start to wonder?
Yeah, and so some of that's going to be, there is a methodology for this. And and I'd like maybe in the next round of this, I can, I can add in a column that shows kind of where you stand with what the credit rating methodology is. But it but it also depends on, it's something called direct debt burden. So it has to do with the population and 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 other, so a few other factors. So but but in general, we we would say if you start to get over that seventy five percent, then it's it's starting to be a concern for 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 everyone, I think. You know, and and there are and there are a number of communities that have, you know, policies in place that that place limits on this beyond what the state does. But but I think, you know, just keeping in mind the credit rating categories is probably the best thing to do. So again, I I will make that change because I think it's it's useful for you all to see what percentage leads to what sort of categorization. But I know that you all are in strong because that would have come up on the report. But you're all in a strong, strong position with your your capacity at this time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. I believe we will see this as all the other pieces and bits come in through the next coming weeks. And so the overall will come back through and we'll take a peek at this, that correct, Matt? Because if there's any adjustments from department heads and committees and everything that may impact this or no?
So we'd be looking for approval of this update. And then the levy that you see for the twenty twenty one budget is is essentially the direction for what I will shoot for with our staff to present to the board in October. So based on the twenty twenty one portion of this five year plan, that's what what I'll stick to. Staff and committees may request for more, you know, and 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 the board will see everything that's requested. But I'll use the plan as as direction for what gets ultimately proposed to the finance committee and then the board at their at the workshop.
Thanks, Matt. I was thinking more future years, say, if we wanted to buy a leaf collector or something like that, if that's the direction that the board wanted to go in in three years, that would definitely impact the capital plan, which would impact this. That's what I was thinking, but.
Oh, sure.
Near term, we kind of have a pretty good idea, other than the the little details that may come out of department heads. Any other discussion or questions from the board members? Otherwise, this is a disgusting, consider as their motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial management plan update for years twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five.
Second from Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none then, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Thanks again, Jonathan.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll move on to utility commission. Heidi, I think this is you.
Yep, we held a very brief meeting on the ninth. We talked about the Vilas Road Water and Sewer Extension was going to be started, but I believe now it has been started. We also received some updates on water sampling and medicine met charges and cross connection inspection. Our next meeting is October fourteenth. I guess unless you had something else to add, JJ? Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Heidi.
Short meeting.
That's all right, you got it all done and you needed to get done, that's good. The next one is the ad hoc architectural review committee. On September eleventh, we met and went through some of the details of the Dolphin Swim Academy Approval Site Plan for their seventy four hundred square foot facility on lot number fifteen in the Commerce Park. That was, that feedback was provided both to the representatives of Dolphin Swim Academy and as well as to the planning commission. So that was approved by the planning commission. We'll cover that later last last week. So any questions with arc review? All right. Next one up is the Committee Development Authority, that's Jeff.
So we did not have a meeting, we did not have a quorum, so we're trying to reschedule that at this time. Aaron's helping us with that.
Yeah, it's going to be next Tuesday on the twenty ninth.
It's next Tuesday on the twenty ninth?
Yep.
It's at five thirty.
Five thirty, yep.
All right. Thanks, Aaron, thanks, Jeff. Then moving on then to, you're still on the hot seat, Jeff. This is the pure court committee on the fifteenth.
Okay, so we met Tuesday, the fifteenth at five P M. There really wasn't a lot to report on. Claudia from Briar Patch mentioned that there really haven't been any referrals for quite some time now. Matter of fact, Cottage Grove is, there's only been three this entire year because of COVID. They are doing their best at reaching out to their parents, the parents on Zoom. But it's been really hard on the parents because, you know, a few, it's just, it's a, it's very, very difficult for them to 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 do what they're doing, but they're they're trying to make it work. And I think our next meeting is going to be on November tenth at five P M. That's all I got.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Next, we have the ad hoc sustainability committee. Heidi, can you cover that?
Sure, so we met last week on Tuesday and there was a presentation from Invision Solar. They produce solar, solar powered electric vehicle charging stations. So they're completely off the grid charging stations for vehicles. You may recognize one at Summit. So the committee is just exploring options for electric vehicle charging stations. We're installing one at some point down the line. Also, working on brainstorming, engaging interest in potentially recommending starting our own grant program where a village business would install an electric vehicle charging station on their property. And the village would provide a grant opportunity to reduce the cost for that business to provide that infrastructure at their location. So that's something you'll probably hear more about in the future. And then we have a resolution to consider tonight. So the committee approved a resolution. It lays out our current position regarding sustainability and goals that the committee recommends we meet moving forward. They felt it was important to lay out measurable goals and actions to help us meet those goals. So a couple of highlights, we establish a baseline electric usage and then commit to purchase energy from renewable sources. We establish a baseline electric usage and then commit to purchase energy from renewable sources if we start to exceed that usage. Also, commit to investing in renewable energy installations on village owned properties over the next twenty years. Commit to energy efficiency measures, so LED lighting, smart thermostat. Commit to promoting energy usage reduction and renewable installation in our whole community. And commit to transitioning to electric vehicle fleet over the course of the next thirty years. So that's the resolution in front of us or a consideration.
All right, thanks, Heidi. Any questions from board members in that presentation on the? Those charging stations was pretty cool. Any questions from board members on the resolution?
I moved to approve the resolution. Oh, go ahead, Melissa.
Well, second then.
Okay.
But I do have a question.
All right.
How how do we maintain where we're at currently? What is gonna be done going forward to make sure? That if if we do exceed and we have to buy. The renewable energy or the excess energy. How like what programs are we gonna in implement so that we don't go over the next year then? Or is that something that the sustainability committee will also be working on?
I think one of the major programs in reducing that. That's been discussed as solar panels. On village owned properties, which we would still utilize that energy, but it would be coming from our own. Renewable source. And then also reducing consumption by replacing. Our light bulbs with LED lights in various locations. And other energy savings like smart thermostats in our village buildings and. I guess other kind of energy saving.
Look at appliances. Like appliances more energy efficient and those types of things going forward. That makes sense. Great, thanks.
Yeah, just so the board knows that the. J J and company, we did put in LEDs in the municipal building. Payback, I think, is in three ish years earlier this year, as well as in Village Hall. I think we all experienced that. Right as the COVID hit, they were very bright and we were commenting on that. So. We are starting to make some, you know, smaller things just on maintenance front. And what Heidi's talking about and the committee is talking about is. Some bigger steps, whether that's replacing vehicles with electric vehicles where the options apply or maybe using. Natural gas and some of the other larger vehicles and converting them over or. Solar panels on on village property all would certainly strive us towards making that. Footprint or reducing our footprint overall and towards these goals that are kind of outlined in the in the resolution. Good questions. Any other questions from committee members? Otherwise, we have a motion and second on the resolution. Want to make sure that anybody else has any other comments or questions, feel free. All right. All right, we have a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty dash eleven. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. That's everyone. Moving on then, we had the plant commission at a different night on a Tuesday evening. But we covered a number of things and you can see it on on the agenda. We have. And I'll kind of walk through the plant commission and Melissa certainly can jump in because she was there as well. And then we'll talk about the discussing consider items that are are laid out on our agenda. So. Plant Commission met last Tuesday, September fifteenth. And we held a public hearing on the general development plan for moving out. For a Glen Grove hundred unit apartment project proposed. On the parcels that are right next to the stop and go on Main Street. Across from the UW clinic to to orient everybody. So that was public opportunity. There were a number of folks that did speak out. And we captured those. Then we moved into discussing consider proposed general development plan for moving out. For the Glen Grove, again, hundred apartment unit complex, as I just stated. The commission. Voted to recommend that the that would be better placed in a different location rather than that location. There was some. Discussion about that. As well as the 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 look of the design. There was a lot of colors. There was concern about that. There were some elevation items that were were discussed. But the the main motion that was passed was it's a good project, just not in that location. There was a motion to approve and that was called down. That's why the recommendation. Rick was there from legal and said that the it would be better if the commission had provided more direction to the board as far as their perspective. And there were. Two dissenting. On that recommendation. Then there was a public hearing held on. Providing conditional use for permit for the Dolphin Swim Academy. Again, as mentioned earlier, this is on lot fifteen, the Commerce Park. That was walked through the plan with the presenter and that was passed. And then there was discussing, consider again, application. For I went through this several times just to to get this all approved, but it was all approved for the swim academy for conditional use. There was a present presentation on pocket neighborhoods. Which is an interesting comment. We started to see this maybe a little bit more with the cost of lots. And just looking at different uses for various properties within our village and elsewhere. So that concept plan was presented just for informational only. Then there was a discussing, consider public participation in a proposed comprehensive plan amendment for a planned mixed use. For number two. And that was approved. Then there was just a zoning amendment for setbacks for parks. And this was mainly concerned. We have some small little pocket parks in certain areas, and when you put our current. Setbacks on those parks, you really are restricted on even putting, say, a jungle gym in in there. So the committee approved for parks less than an acre to waive the setbacks for for those. Then the discussion represented from the housing task force, just letting everybody know from. The plant commission that we do have a we're starting to put together a housing task force and just put a little button there here. That it was recommended by us, the board, to have a member from the commission so that. That was just informational. If they're interested to let us let me know or Aaron know. That was a quick flyby of the plant commission. Melissa, did I miss anything else?
You got it all.
Okay. All right, that fed right into the next items then here on our agenda. And the first one is A is discussing, consider the purpose of general general development plan for moving out. For the Glen Grove one hundred unit apartment project and proposed parcels zero seven one one dash zero four three dash. Zero 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 six dash zero zero seven one. One dash zero four three dash zero zero one seven dash three and parcel zero seven one one dash zero four three. Dash zero zero two eight dash zero. We did have some public feedback on that that was submitted via email. I think everybody got those. They were sent out. Late this afternoon. I'll just mention them so you can refer back to them in your emails. The first one I pulled up here is from Anne Shoneman. She. Wants to share her thoughts on the board discussing moving out apartments. And ask that this be passed along to the board members. She says she's in favor of approving the apartments. The mission is to partner with people with disabilities, their families. And their allies to create a sustained, community, integrated, safe, affordable homes. And goes on again in support of that. And so you guys all have that. The second one was from Ryan Lovejoy. Ryan is again indicating that he's writing today to show his support for approving. The current agenda eight A affordable housing for moving out. As a business grows, we need staff. And we are already seeing challenges in in some levels. Ryan is owner of Dunderance Distilling and goes on to kind of outline those. Again, everybody got got that information. Next one I have here is from David Peterson. He again says, I'm writing to support moving out. Supremely disappointed the plant commission's four to two. Vote in in moving against moving out. That land has been vacant for over twenty years, and this is the most viable plan that's been put forth for the village for the land. Since Andrew Hamburg took ownership. And. Goes on to say. As a as a parent of autistic son, moving out represents a very real possibility. My son could live. Independent life when he's an adult. Next one here again, no particular order. This one is from John Russell. He's writing to express his opposition for the Glen Grove apartment proposed as discussed in the plant commission. And on the agenda of the village board meeting tonight, first of all, it's not consistent with the village comprehensive plan. Changing it to a PB to P U D only compounds the issue. As you know, when it requires to waive the approve. With conditions, the five items listed in the staff recommendations. One of the conditions is twenty six less parking spaces required. Where the where would they suggest to park on the street? There's no assault, safe, alternative additionally landscape surface is not consistent with which additional runoff into storm suiters. And it goes on from there. And again, you guys have all this. The next one is from Nathan Lovick. He is he lives on Sunset Drive, he says. In Cottage Grove, it's a half mile from the proposed low income housing structure. Putting a low income structure or home home, excuse me, putting low income housing in this location where there's. No nearby grocery, no bus line and limited access to Uber lift taxi services. Is quite concerning, not only because people living in the location don't have. Access to necessities necessities, but also for the safety of the surrounding area. It goes on as says, pay the highest. We we pay the highest tax in all of Dana County. And there are three hundred thousand dollar homes that surround the post site. And then finishes out there. Next one is from Bill Schultz. He's writing, he wants to share his thoughts on the with the board on moving out. That being is being considered, the proposed since me with resonating with me. As I was born with multiple disabilities, what moving out has done and wants to do in Cottage Grove has so much merit. Because it changes the lives of people who face significant hurdles. If you would, please meet your phone if you're not part of the board. Thank you. It has merit again. It changes people's lives who has faced significant hurdles. In their own life and who have the desire to overcome them and experience life as it should. And it goes on to spell out how, you know, he's gone through this. So that's those are. The feedback from. Citizen surgery and others, and I wanted to make sure I covered those before we get into. This particular item and questions and comments and discussion. Because otherwise I'd miss it. Yes.
Can I add two more? I emailed these out late, but you may not have received them. Lisa Fitch from two oh nine Weldbridge Roads sent in in support of the proposed moving out affordable housing project. And then this email was sent just to me, but I did forward it to the whole board. It's from Greg Klein at eight twenty four Sunset Drive. With a list of questions of the proposed project, how it's being out there, no one hearing of it. Basically not in support, but I did email that so the board does have both of those.
All right. Thanks, Lisa. All right, so again, this is discussing, consider. The commission plant commission talked about a number of things. The. Building itself, as far as there was a lot of different colors to try to break it up a little bit because it is a long building. That was discussed. I think that could more than likely be overcome with using different materials, you know, concrete, different types of. Materials, I think, and I would hope that moving out would be open to some suggestions there because. They can look just down the street to see how. On the corner of Gaston and Maine, how they've used different materials there to kind of break up the building. Versus, say, the corner of Limerick and BB Artisan. And they use color there and it's fading already and. It's not, it doesn't seem to be durable and that that would be. One of the concerns I have as far as this building, but I think that's that could be overcome by just parsing out that particular. You know, that particular look of the building and just using some different materials that are a bit more durable and that'll break that up. It's a long building on highway and and again. Could be. Broken up in that fashion. The and there's questions about, you know, how how good a neighbor there. I don't know if Chief Labor is on, if he had a chance to reach out to any of his peers to see. What kind of. If they have feedback on the moving out facilities in their communities and what kind of interactions they've had. You know, Chief Labor is on. I think he did reach out.
Yeah, I did that. I did that last year, John, and. Two out of three of the apartments in Stoughton, two in Madison had pretty good things to say about. The apartments and management and all that. So and the third one had some problems, but they got it fixed. So generally. They had good things to say about. How they run their businesses and its effect on the community wasn't, you know, overly bad for police having to be there all the time.
Thanks, Chief. All right, this is. Discussion for the committee, so or board. So anybody have questions, comments? Melissa and I heard the discussion, certainly at the commission. And the questions that were were asked there. Staff has seen the layout and everything. I don't know if they have comments, but let's open up the board first.
Did anyone ask to speak on this topic from the public before we have our discussion?
Other than the the emails that came in, they didn't ask, Sarah.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure.
And that certainly opened it up at the beginning of the meeting too as well for for some for anyone that wanted to comment.
Sure, thanks.
We did have the open hearing too as well at the plant commission.
Great, thank you. And there are some folks from moving up on the on the meeting, do I see?
Yep. It's I'm Megan Schutz in the real estate developer with moving out. And we do have Adam Friendel from JLA as well. We do have a presentation to share. I don't know if that's what we're supposed to do. I don't know when we're supposed to do that.
Yeah, let's see it. Megan, that would be great. Sorry again.
No, that's all right. I'm gonna share my screen. And then you guys can tell me if you see something that looks like a PowerPoint presentation.
We see a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. Is it like in present view or are you seeing like all my notes too?
We're not seeing notes. We're just seeing the multiple slides that you would go through. So it's, there you go.
All right. Thank you. I can never tell when I open it up. It opens up on two screens and I don't know what you guys can see. So again, my name is Megan Schutz, a real estate developer with moving out. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with the board. We are very excited about the potential opportunity to bring affordable housing to Cottage Grove and not just any affordable housing. We're pretty proud of our mission and those individuals and families that we support. So we support folks with disabilities to create and sustain community-integrated, safe, affordable housing. Essentially what that means is we target no more than 20 to 25% of our units to folks with disabilities. What that does, it allows people to live in kind of a normal integrated setting, a normal neighborhood, a normal community and develop a family. I'm appreciative of Soraya Dane who talked at the beginning of the board meeting here. She's one of our residents. She's actually I call her kind of our mom at Penny Lane. She, she will be walking every day and cleaning up the whatever she can find, which she will always attest to that she does not find much, but she's very particular about how we present, how they're presented. But she's been, she's been both a moving out board member for a bit and has lived at Penny since it opened. And will, will speak, you know, to focusing on that community that's created. We're a statewide nonprofit. We also do housing counseling and down payment assistance, rehab assistance to ensure people can stay in their homes for longer. We're really formed by a group of parents who had adult children with disabilities who realized that there weren't community-integrated options for their, for their children to live. They really had the choice of living at home with mom and dad and managing that as parents aged, which is very difficult. Or a group home or even you know, assisted living type facilities. And it really isn't appropriate for everyone's need. So moving out has, over the last 12 years, worked on developing multifamily apartments with this integrated approach. So over a thousand apartments, of which about 250 are community-integrated. And we recently did an analysis through Edgewood College of the one-year impact of four of our developments and noted that it added over $100 million to the economy and created 490 jobs and brought the affordable housing options to ensure that people were able to live near where they work and play and kids go to school. Just a really quick overview of our project team. Moving out will be so owner, we're the developer and will provide service coordination. JLA is our architect. McGann Construction is our general contractor. ACC Management is our property management. And then we have a variety of partners identified to provide services which I'll detail out a little bit further on. This is Penny Lane Apartments, just to give a few, it's nice to kind of see what we're actually talking about. This is on Cottage Grove Road across from the new Penny Library. We've also developed in Wanakee. And there was a project mentioned earlier too, which is Alvinstead in Stoughton. And we maintain a really great relationship in Stoughton with our development there. And I think others have contacted Stoughton folks to kind of acknowledge that as well. We've been trying to do a second project. We're just trying to get the scoring to work. Worked a variety of other partner communities throughout Wisconsin. But really feel the need in Cottage Grove is great. And have really started to see it changing and tied to the support and the need for affordable housing. If there's anything, one of the lessons that COVID has taught us, it's how quickly something like your job and what you make can have an impact on your, on your day-to-day life. And housing is truly the roots of everyone's success. Healthy, safe, affordable housing. If you don't have that, the ability to succeed in other areas is greatly minimized. So a quick overview on Glen Grove, we're talking about 100 units, a mix of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. One of the topics that we noted early on in our discussions with the village and with our market analyst was the lack of affordable three-bedroom units in Cottage Grove. Not everyone is, is able to buy a house. Not everyone wants to maintain a house or duplex. Multifamily living is a good, is a great choice for a lot of families. And really what you're going to see is that those families are living in either units that they can't afford. And they're seeing too much of their money go to rent. Or they're living in substandard housing that they can't afford, but is not benefiting their health in any way. A mix of incomes between 30 and 80% of county median income. I've got a slide in a bit that kind of details that out just to kind of see some numbers and put some some numbers to it. All of our competitive funding sources have been awarded. And all the sources and kind of everything we've come to so far have been based on on this hundred units that we started with. You know, I think it's a year and a half ago or so, maybe just over a year. You know, and we've bounced around to sites trying to find the one that was, was appropriate and that restrictions weren't in place to exclude affordable housing. And actually, I'm really happy with where the site that we have landed on. It's you know, I believe in fate a little bit with that. It's, the proximity to local employers is really great. It's an up and coming area as it connects with the interstate, but it still, it still has the feel of Cottage Grove and what your community is all about. And while there's not a grocery store next door, the grocery store is still pretty close to get to the, to get to the Piggly Wiggly. It's a I think it's a great site. We do have onsite management anticipated that will be staffed during normal business hours. Community room, a fitness center. We really also prioritize when we go through the design, green space to ensure that there's safe places for children and raised gardens that are accessible for everybody. It will be a non-smoking environment and we will incorporate underground parking. I know there have been some questions about the parking. Right now, we're right around 194 spaces that, that about ties out to one space per bedroom. I think it's, you know, just a hundredth or of a number underneath that. But the other thing to note is that we do have 20 units that are going to be targeted to folks with disabilities. And on average, they do have a much lower car ownership rate. They tend to rely on shared transportation services, which, which come with their services through the family care system. And those are able to access locations throughout Dane County and are used very regularly at all of our projects, including those in Wanakee and Stoughton. And then we do pride ourselves in designing our projects above and beyond the minimum code requirements. So we believe in universal design, which means it can work for everyone and doesn't negatively affect anyone. And it's a lot easier to do it now than to try to modify it later. And ultimately, something like the height of the ceiling of the switches when I walk into a room doesn't change how I look at an apartment, but it can be a great impact for someone who really needs it. Just a few notes on market details. We have had a third-party market study that's been completed. The market, the primary market area of mostly Cottage Grove has a 1.3% vacancy rate. That, that pretty much means that there are not enough units for the people that live there. That's, that's below even kind of the standard normal turnover that you will see in a vacancy rate. And also that lack of inventory will consistently continue to drive your rents up in addition to them not being affordable in the first place. And we, and that market study did show a demand for units within Cottage Grove's market versus other parts of Dane County. Essentially, you're not seeing a demand coming from the west side of Madison for people who want to move to Cottage Grove. It's really the demand is within Cottage Grove itself. We anticipate a four to five month lease-up period. That's a very short lease-up period based on the demand for 100 units. And as I noted earlier, there are no other three-bedroom affordable apartments in Cottage Grove. And I know there were some concern about the, the number of units. We feel very confident in, in the market that exists here. It's supported by a third-party market study. And will provide opportunities in addition to the 105 high-end market rate units that were approved just two blocks up the road. And just some statistics from the Dane County Housing Needs Assessment. Essentially, the first three bullet points address the continuing increase in households that in Cottage Grove that fall within the affordable housing ranges. So between 2010 and 2015, there was a 10% increases for, for individuals at or below 30% county median income. A 41% increase of people between 30 and 50% and a 61% increase between 50 and 80%. Just continually showing the demand and the need for affordable housing. And just one other note that there are currently zero units that are affordable to people at 30% or below of county median income in Cottage Grove. And we have started an interest list since we started working this project towards the end of last year. We've already got 150 households on that interest list for a project that won't be opening for over a year. So that's pretty standard. We just started construction on a project just down Cottage Grove Road in Madison, and we had over 300 households on that waitlist when we broke ground. So strong demand for units of all types. This is a lot of numbers, but a quick overview, just to get an idea of how rent and income limits work. The income limits are based on the number of people in your household, including children. So that you will see between the one person, two people, so forth. And then each income range there is the combined income between all adults that are on the lease. So you might look at some of those ranges and go, that sure doesn't sound like quote unquote affordable housing. I don't know that I would think of a family that made $80,000 to fall within that range, but based on the high incomes in Dane County, it does. And I also noted some of the average SSI and SSDI monthly incomes to just consider for some of those of the most deeply targeted units. And then, you know, the hourly's I put in there was just assuming it was one working person. Obviously, if there were two working people, you divide that by two, but that's the easiest way to convey the numbers. But you're seeing anywhere from $21,000 to $86,000. That's a wide range. It's really the the root of addressing workforce housing and the need for the local workforce. It's a wide range that's currently not served. And then these are the rent limits that are generated off based on those incomes. Generally speaking, you shouldn't pay more than 30% or so of your monthly income to rent. And that's where these rents are then, rent limits are generated. And these are, that would be inclusive of utilities. And again, I would just note the wider range, anywhere from $600 to $2,000. It's a wide range and we have targeting at every level of every unit type to ensure our goal is always that someone walks in the door that we have a unit that fits their needs. And then this is just a quick overview of our anticipated initial rents. Again, when we open in two years, the rent and income limits will likely go up. But this, so this is an initial starting point. I put an asterisk on the 30% units. We do have 11 units that will be covered with a Section 811 voucher. Those are rental subsidies specifically for adults with disabilities. So that SSI and SSDI amount that those individuals typically bring in is then subsidized to ensure that they have access to quality affordable housing. But other than that, you will see, you know, a general range between you know, in the 50s through 80s, between 900 and 1,500. I always, whenever I look at those, I think back to when I was still in an apartment and it doesn't seem, it seems so kind of pricey to me. I've got to update my times a little bit, but that, that does allow for people to be paying. This is also based on the third-party market study. So you know, the 80% rents you'll see are actually only at 80% of the max to be consistent with what the market study indicated were achievable rents. And we're not in the business of maximizing every single dollar. We want units to be affordable and achievable for those in that range. And then just a quick overview, I did a quick review on Indeed.com of jobs in Cottage Grove that fall within this range. Some of the, some of the typical careers that you would see, teachers, police officers, municipal workers, mortgage loan officers, medical lab technicians, medical assistants, they don't put their job the salaries in the job listing. They make you apply and then find out, I guess. But we do, on average, see those careers typically fall within this range. But you can see childhood, you know, early childhood education, orthodontic technicians, laborers, people that work in the stores and businesses that are in your community easily fall within the ranges of these projects for these rents. And just a quick overview on our service plan, we do utilize our resident service coordination program. So we partner with agencies that specialize in specific services, whether it's for families experiencing homelessness or veterans or adults with disabilities, children with disabilities, mental health, whatever it is. We've got a, an agreement with local providers. Whether it's Care Wisconsin, which is, has, is operating under a new name, but that's who our agreement was with to a number of services through Dane County. And then our job in terms of resident service coordination is to ensure that those households are connected with those residents. That's another overview of those that we're working with. And just to note that many of the individuals that we work with, I always say they come with services through the statewide care system. That can include transportation, housing, employment, medical, and more. But our job is to make sure that they stay connected and have access to those opportunities that they qualify for. And we also like to consider ourselves a conduit between property management and the, and the residents as well. Property managers are really focused on keeping the numbers up and keeping units occupied and turned over and that everything's operating the way it should. But we pride ourselves in filling that role between those two so that a tenant can call us. If there's something they, they don't understand, we deal with a lot of individuals who are living on their own for the first time, and we want to make sure that they are long-term successes within our developments. And we, on average, have a much lower than average eviction rate and a much higher than average retention rate. I think I already covered our approach in terms of service plans to ensure people are successful as tenants and full citizens in their community. So that's the end of mine. And then I'm going to pass it over to, if I can figure out the right button. I can't find the, sorry. I can't find the stop sharing button. Give me one minute here, guys. I'm just, oh, I found it. Okay, sorry. And then Adam was going to take over on the specific design.
Yes, thank you, Megan. All right. Hello, everyone. I'm Adam from, from JLA Architects. I'll try to be somewhat brief here, but a little bit on the site plan. Obviously, everyone's familiar with the location. One of the things that we looked at with this site was how can we efficiently fit this building on here in a plan that is going to work with the budget for this kind of project? We did look at having two separate buildings, which is possible on the site. However, there's some common amenities that are built into this that are essential in the building between club room, fitness center. And, and really, we wanted to create a sense of community by having reasons for people to go to those common areas and a direct connection to the green space and playground area. There's a series of patios and balconies around the perimeter of the building and we intend to have it nicely landscaped. Jump through these real quick. This is not all that exciting, but there's two different types of stormwater retention. There is a bio filtration area down on the south side of the site. And we have two structures underground at the parking entrances. Again, this is the site plans, Megan said a hundred units heavily weighted towards the three bedrooms. The underground parking has two access points so that there's a little shorter trip inside. Centralized elevators, stairs, of course, at the ends in the middle of the building. The floor plans, I won't get into that too much, but that just gets into the particulars. This is that central area I was talking about. So there's a connection to highway N and as well to the to the middle of the site for the outdoor amenities. But elevator course there, mail would be down in this area, fitness, club room. And then there's also storage facilities at the knuckles of the of the building. Due to some of the comments last time, we did simplify the palette a bit. We eliminated some of the colors and we kept one one accent color, which is, these are all fiber cement panels and lap siding. We have the blue used as an accent, the gray and the cedar tone is finished to to look like stained wood. Use some of the, are on some of the bigger masses of the building with some neutral colors. The brick is very neutral in nature, but it has some texture and some fleck to it. So that being said, I want to show a few of the slides that we presented to plant commission. So these were some of the areas that I don't think were very well received. The intent was, of course, to break things up and have a little bit more of a, you know, a different feel or that's a green wing or the blue wing. At any rate, we simplified from there and this image, you can see we eliminated the bold colors and tried to get a little more earth tone. In this image, the the orange is that wood color. The blue is the fiber cement panel. The gray is all lap siding fiber cement. And then there's some accents by the balcony returns. So again, this is from the previous version. And then there's a rendered view showing the simplification of color and strategies to pull it together with some of the accent colors, but still feel like the forms are a little bit different. So it kind of starts to get a, you know, a feeling of separate building masses. But as you can see with balconies that are sometimes recessed, sometimes hung from the building, it gives you a good sense of depth in the facade, which helps with shadow lines. Also, you know, those shadows created by these things help set off masses and forms as well. So that's a view of the highway N side. And as you can see, there's a red color in there and a blue color. And this one shows just the simplification of some of the material palette and color strategy. Get down some of these, so the renderings, the color that you see in the renderings is very much affected by the sunlight in the program. So as I'm sure you're all aware, as the sun moves across the sky, buildings have a tendency to, you know, colors can slightly change depending on your vantage point, shadows that you're seeing. This retaining wall, because we have such a drop in the site from one corner to the other, it will be more of a, sorry. I think we're going to pull this down and do a railing on top of it instead of stepping in a full wall, but we do have to get to guardrail height right there. Here is a shot from the northwest, or sorry, from the southeast looking north. Yeah, I'm just gonna show you a few slides so you can understand the changes made and strategy here to. So all the accent balcony faces, it's all used in similar positions and then the forms that project are also the accent color. Is a shot of the parking area and green space in the middle, very friendly playground, should be a great spot for kids to play and people to get together. And the last image I have here is a shot of the front entry on N. So the goal here, of course, was to listen to the comments from plant commission and try to come up with a solution that still works with the owner's pro forma. You know, the the two building approach was tough to do because it adds elevators, it adds stairs, it adds facade. And it breaks, you know, the foundation also has two more walls. So it was, it was very intentional to go to a single building and try to work with the architecture of the facade to help break it up and feel like a collection of smaller forms. That said, Megan, if you have anything else you want to add, otherwise we can open it up to questions.
No, I'll just point out again, we showed kind of that that board, which was a little bit more true to the real colors. But I like, if you want to go back one more, just back to that last one, Adam. The one thing it does show is that wood grain on on those panels to really, we're trying to be intentional with using different looks and different textures and different surfaces. I really like this next kind of approach we took. We're open to conversations about it. We understand we want it to be something that everyone's proud of when they drive by. We want to be proud of it. And hopefully, this is a step in the right direction to still give some vibrancy for the community that we're creating here, but still ensure that it's something that in the in the long run, looks looks good twenty years from now as well. And that and that's our goal. And ensuring that we're we're choosing materials that will kind of stand the test of time and and weather and all that as well. That's all I had.
I I could, I'm happy to leave this up here. If anyone wants to jump to images or if you'd rather I stop sharing my screen, let me know.
All right, thanks, Megan and Adam, appreciate it. I'll open it up to the board to certainly ask Megan or Adam any questions related to the project.
This is Sarah, I've got a few, if you indulge me in my questions. My first one, can you kind of just help, I think some folks that hear affordable and assume low income? And there's definitely a difference in low income housing versus affordable housing. I'm just wondering if you can just highlight that for everybody.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of words that are used and and as soon as one kind of gets some stigma with it, we move in our industry, move on to the the next buzzword, right? So you hear it started as low income, that the tax credits we utilize are called low income housing tax credits. Then you heard just affordable, now you're hearing workforce, but but ultimately it's a range. And it's those numbers that I showed earlier, anywhere from from thirty percent of area median income, with the majority of those being really focused on folks with disabilities, because they they tend to have the most limited incomes, all the way up to eighty percent. So you saw that as an income of eighty thousand dollars, right? So a lot of his semantics in terms of what's used, low income sometimes gets connected with other, you know, section eight and other terms, and they they all kind of serve their role in different in different situations and for different needs. But ultimately, we're really talking about a wide range. We're talking about someone making twenty dollars an hour, it's someone making forty dollars an hour. So it's it's a wide range and it, again, it brings so much different connotations depending on who you're talking to that I I appreciate that there can be some confusion with that. But I think one of the things that's really awesome about the approach that we're able to take here and the funding sources we have is that we can have that wide range. And you can truly build a neighborhood where, you know, I don't know what the people who live across the road from me make. I don't really care because they're nice and they're good to my kids, right? So th- those are the things that we should be focusing on instead of what your hourly income is, but I have, the focus is making sure that people aren't paying too much. And in Dane County especially, the rent burden that people are carrying and the lack of ability to share those dollars with healthcare and education and other things that provide for healthy living is is, it's really a great need in Dane County.
Thanks, that's helpful. My next question, I was hoping you can again clarify, I think I thought in the plan notes, but I just like to hear it from you guys too, that the property on the far east side of Milwaukee and if Madison on Milwaukee Street is not owned nor operated in any way by moving out or your property management company, is that accurate?
Correct, correct, that's not a moving out property and ACC management has not managed it for almost a year.
And, you know, can you kind of walk us through if we were to have some sort of concern or issue that are kind of bubbling up in your in your property? What would, how would you work with us to resolve it?
Yeah, absolutely, and it it happens. You make you make a change and you bring new people in, so stuff comes up. In in my experience, the best approach to that is number one, having open communications before you even open your door. So we would engage with your police department in terms of looking at our security plans and our camera plans and and everything to to make sure that they feel comfortable. And then we would have ongoing communications that resident service coordination role that we have also includes coordinating with the community, right? So whether it's schools or the police department or whatever else, our goal is to to be a good neighbor. And and if ever a situation comes up, we're more than happy to to meet, come up with a plan, figure out the best way to address it. All of our residents will go through the same screening criteria. They all have to meet minimum requirements, both in addition to income, right? There are minimum income requirements for these projects kind of tied to that, you know, can you pay thirty percent of your income to and pay this rent? But we also have rules that everyone has to operate by to ensure that all your neighbors have a fair and and safe living experience. So we're more than open to having discussions and meetings and coming up with plans and promoting whatever we need to within our community. And it does happen. I mean, every now and then something will come up. We don't have any sort of consistent issues with any of our properties. But, you know, every now and then you get a resident that's not great. And that's true whether it's affordable or mark your aid.
Or single family home, I, we have single family homes that are considered nuisance properties, so.
We're, we're going to be, these units are going to be affordable for at least thirty years. And as a nonprofit, we are not motivated in any way to move it, you know, build it and sell it and move on. Simply not legally, we're not allowed to do it and it's not part of our mission, right? So we're going to be here for a a long time and we we want to be an asset to your community.
Perfect. My last question is around parking. It's maybe it's a two part question, one for maybe Aaron and then another one for moving out. So I know there's concern on a number of parking spots. I'm not sure how many, if we were to follow all of the rules, Aaron, would this property suggest we would need? And then, given the hundred ninety four and you guys have built many properties and you're feeling comfortable with a hundred ninety four parking spots for a hundred apartments, I'm guessing you have similar ratios to parking to bedrooms in your other communities and have you had parking issues?
So so I'll address that first while Aaron finds his unmute button. But on average, affordable housing, it's a lot more typical to see a one to one. So one parking space per per unit. We understand that we are dealing with a a location that isn't served by public transportation and that you are more likely to have more car owners. And we're, we're almost at two to one and we're at one per bedroom almost. It's it's really unlikely for those with more limited incomes to be a multiple car owning household as well. So I feel very comfortable with the amount and and, you know, in addition, we have a strategic goal within our community to ensure that we are creating and making smart choices for the future, right? So no one wants a sea of of asphalt anywhere. And and we're trying to promote health, you know, environmentally friendly opportunities as well. And, you know, I I I'm more than confident, I would put money that you will see that parking lot with not a lot of cars in it once we're built. They'll go underground because that's nice for when it's hot or when it's snowing. And that's included in rent as well.
Sarah, as far as the number strictly following the ratios and the ordinance, we'd be looking at two hundred twenty three. So approximately a difference of twenty, twenty something or around thirty. But I can say we have looked at those ratios in other instances before with one of the Houston senior apartment projects down in Old Town. We allowed a lower ratio and then after that, the zoning or the planning commission actually went back and reduced the ratios for senior housing in our our instances where our zoning ordinance just does not anticipate every use that can come forward. And I think their explanation, that's especially with having the units set aside for families with a disability, that those are going to have fewer cars, I think has merit.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass it on to my colleague.
All right, thanks, Sarah. Other questions?
Like the changes in the color scheme, I think a more traditional color scheme is a little more timeless and doesn't look dated after a while. So, but I do have a question about the brick material. Is that like a utility brick or is it like cement panels? Or what kind of material will be that brick texture?
It is, the size of the brick could be utility size, it was a little bit bigger than modular. I'll flip back to the board here. So this is, the this size of brick is modular, right? So the utility is a couple inches longer and I believe an inch taller. But it is, it is a masonry product, clay masonry. And I believe the the flecking you get here is from wire cut. I can't see it close enough and I don't have the board in front of me, but it does have a nice texture to it.
Okay, I also had a question. So there, there's a big grade change across the property. So you have the retaining wall on one side and then the other side will be lower, but some of the elevations I saw, it kind of made it look like the properties flat, so like how will it look kind of out of the ground a little bit? Is that finished in the same style or how will it look from that south?
So most of those areas are masonry. So it is the brick that you'd see more of as the hill, as it goes downhill a little bit. So that the view from over on this side, you can see that it's a little lower down here. So these first floor units actually walk out, have walkout patios that are kind of private feeling. So we think that some people really appreciate that, especially with the traffic on N. You know, if we look at a view like this, you can really see the grade difference here. And this is what, you know, we can't change anything beyond the property line. So this is what it's naturally doing right now. We got a really high spot over here and it's ten, eleven feet lower down on this corner. So as you can see, you know, the masonry below the windowsill and parking garage is down here. So there's no real fenestration into that. And then, let's see if I can get a better view. So this is, like I said, this retaining wall would come down, have a railing on it, which I think will have a little bit more transparency, of course, and feel less like a wall. And then from this end, you can see, this is our low end of the site. This is that bio retention area, should be planted with native species, really kind of be more like prairie feeling. Would not be wet all the time, so it's not going to be a pond. But you can see the wall down here is a little bit taller, but it is all brick.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Then I had a question about sidewalks. So there's sidewalks all along Windsor then? Like the west side of the property?
Yes.
But it'll connect, okay. And then on Main Street, so there's sidewalk in front of like your property lines. Is that, it'll extend the entire length of the property?
That's the intent, right, as of right now, you know, the sidewalk would not connect up with anything on on one end or the other. But we would place it so that it's in alignment with where the city wants the sidewalk.
Yeah, I think and we got some feedback about moving that a little closer to the road, so it's in more of the Yeah, I think and we got some feedback about moving that a little closer to the road. So it's in more of the kind of standard sidewalk location uh from planning commission. So that's definitely something I will, we want it to connect. That would, that would make sense. It just doesn't connect till um the next project gets developed.
Sure. Um, I guess then that's a question for staff maybe. So the section that would connect to School Road in front of the gas station? How does that get built? Because you know, people might want to leave the front door here and then walk to School Road and then get across the street. So how do we make that happen? I guess for village connectivity to promote, you know, then you can cross at School Road at the light with a cross signal instead of maybe someone might jaywalk when the sidewalk ends to get across. I don't, is that something that we can put as a condition that the sidewalk gets extended to the intersection or are we allowed to do that?
So Aaron can probably address that. We can't really build on someone else's property. Um, they tend to frown upon that. But uh, and it makes a lot of sense to, to, to connect that. Um, I don't know how that's addressed. And obviously part of our discussions will be ensuring that we connect with traffic and engineering as well.
Right.
That's something we don't have to discuss with this specific project.
Kevin, Adam, if you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I don't know if you can put it on them to necessarily do that or if that would just be a village project to extend that to the intersection um down there. It's something that could definitely be discussed. Uh, there's definitely a gap there right now. Um, I don't know if that's, you know, uh, within tiffs or anything like that. I'm not sure as far as paying for it and everything. Can be discussed though.
It is, but sideways would ge- generally be handled as a potential special, special assessment. So that could be something that would be um a discussion with the stop and go slash uh quick trip now.
Sure. I mean, I think that would be a really beneficial connection to make. Um, and then I know previously there were some talks about traffic, but I just wanted to confirm with Steph that we could change the timing of traffic signals or add a turn signal if we find that traffic is a problem at certain times of day. We, do we have the ability to modify the traffic signal timing?
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to talk with our traffic engineers for sure, but all those uh should be able to be modified to accommodate, you know, different amounts of traffic at a time and everything. So yes.
Okay. I mean, that's good. It provides some flexibility. Um, I think that's all the questions I have for now. Thanks.
Um, I'll, it's Melissa. I'll add um on to Heidi's that I think that area along N also does not have curb and gutter. So that, or at least a curb, so that might, for putting a sidewalk in, we'll have to look at that. And I don't know exactly how that all works or, but um, I think that's important for safety as well.
If, if I can ask, this will be more of a staff question. If, if we allow for less parking than we would normally allow for a structure this many um apartments or, or I should say renters uh slash people living there. Are, are we setting up precedence to other developers by doing this? Are we putting ourselves at risk for lawsuits if we pick and choose which ones we say yes and which ones we say no to?
Uh, I guess I can address that question. Uh, I guess it's a fairly typical question, asking if you're granting exceptions. Are you opening yourself up? Uh, generally I would think no. Uh, so every project's gonna have its own sort of unique circumstances. And as long as you're not acting in an arbitrary manner, that's the most important aspect of it. So with, in this circumstance, since there's a, a variance that's being um requested, you know, if there's a justification for it, um, then you're not setting any sort of precedent because you're using it based on the circumstances that are existing. And especially with a, a planned unit development, it's supposed to be fairly flexible in the standards that you're applying. So I, I, I think especially in a planned unit development scenario, you're offered further protection, I guess, from that arbitrary uh sort of action that you're not supposed to do.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Rick. Um, uh, uh, another question, if, if market rate on an apartment is a thousand dollars, um, how much um, I, I guess I'm looking, starting with the right word. How much additional funds do you get through other funding, you know, to help pay for that rent for someone if they're paying five hundred dollars on a thousand dollar unit? How much more do you get?
Right. So none of our units are, well, apart, apart from the section eight eleven units for disabilities, the rest of the units, the eighty-nine other units are not subsidized at all. Essentially, how the tax credit program works is that because we're artificially uh limiting our rents, we're able to apply for other funding sources to bridge the capital stack gap that comes from that. So because we can't support as much of a first mortgage, because we don't have as much income coming in, we have access to other resources um like housing tax credits, um, the Dane County Affordable Housing Funds, um, home funds, um, and Federal Home Loan Bank funding that help bridge that gap and make up for um that lessened amount of first mortgage. On a typical deal, you'll see about eighty percent of, of your capital stack is a first mortgage. And it's, it's greatly reduced on um, on a tax credit deal. And it's, it's subsidized uh through other actual capital sources versus um subsidy for specific residents. Does that answer the question?
Uh, uh, kind of. I, I, I guess I'm just trying to get a read as to what percentage, if it's subsidized, uh, are, are you receiving from other funds um to get closer to market rate, if, 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 if we want to call it that?
Yeah. So, so it doesn't subsidize the rents at all. It just subsidizes our sourcing. Um, so it doesn't change our operations. It subsidizes our initial sourcing, the bucket of money I have to build the building in the first place. Um, I, if you can give me five seconds here, I had my model up and I can give you kind of general estimates. Um, so this project is about a twenty-two million dollar project and about twelve million of that is coming from a first mortgage. The remaining is coming from some of these other sources that I mentioned earlier and also from us uh as a developer, so moving out, deferring um over half of its fee uh to help fill that gap as well. And so, so about fifty, well, it's twelve over twenty-two. Sorry, I'm doing math on the fly here. Um, so about fifty-five percent is covered by the first mortgage versus a market rate apartment. We typically see about eighty percent of it covered by a first mortgage.
All right. No, that, that helps. Um, and, and then are, are you gonna be asking for any public financing for this um building at all?
Yeah, we are looking into a, a TIF request. Um, we don't have that application finalized yet. Uh, we've, we've been in some initial discussions um with city staff. Uh, we're still working on that application. Um, and we'll, we'll be limited to um the remaining life on the TIF, uh, but for an opportunity for extending that for affordable housing uses for one year, which we're having discussions. So yes, we do anticipate and ask. Um, we don't have that application submitted yet though.
Do you know approximately what percentage or, or what, how much money you're gonna be looking for?
Uh, I don't have that final number. We, we're working through that. Um, and, and my understanding is that's a separate process um with the, with the village um in terms of negotiating that. But it would be um consistent with the income generated, the income approach for taxes on this project. Um, which I believe is uh between one fifty and two hundred thousand dollars annually. I don't have that number right in front of me though. Um.
That's okay. That's okay. Uh, and then would you be paying uh from a tax respect, property tax perspective, you're paying property tax on the full twenty-two million? Is that correct?
So with uh affordable developments, you uh taxes are calculated using, utilizing the income approach. So the income from our rents is uh determines our NOI, which then goes into kind of the, the tax calculator machine. Uh, so we wouldn't pay the same as a market rate development, um, because we are limited on our incomes. Um, but that's pretty standard practice. Uh, it is standard practice throughout the state for affordable projects.
So you're gonna ask for kid money and not pay back um market rate for the tax side of the property taxes? And just, just make sure I understand that.
Well, I mean, the, the, the TIF that we'll apply for will be supported by ta- the tax increment that the project generates. So the difference between what we um anticipate as annual taxes and the, the current taxes that are being paid on the property.
I don't know if I'm explaining that right. Aaron, I don't know, or Matt, if you want to jump in at all?
Just the request would not be based on the full construction value either. It would be based on the assessed value based on your four, more affordable fourth. So it would be a lower ask than if it was a market rate seeking the same kind of percentage of TIF.
All right. Thank you. And, and I can add to Troy that um the discussion tonight about the, essentially the site and the zoning. Um, i- if it, if it happens to be approved, that there's still a separate negotiation with uh regarding the finances and a pending developer agreement. So um, ap- approval of the, the site and the zoning um does not mean that, you know, if, if the negotiations or whatever happen to fall through on the other aspects of the project, um, it's kind of independent from, from this discussion tonight.
All right. Um, I guess I had a question for Adam. Have, regarding the materials, have, has moving out uh used these materials on other buildings you guys have had? What's your experience with them? Um, they seem like there's, they're durable. And, and you did mention that. I was just curious if you had experience with them, how they're, how they go over time and how they, how you deal with that?
Absolutely. We, we use these materials on most, most apartment buildings. Um, JLA is, is on dozens of buildings around the area. Thousands of units. Um, fiber cement panel is just that, right? It's, it's cementitious product made up of fibers. Um, and it, the, the finish, I think, is a warranty of twenty years on it. Um, but the, the durability is, is pretty long-lasting. I mean, there's, there's not too many siding products out there um that perform better unless you get into, you know, high-end metal panels and things like that. Um, but for an apartment building, these are, these are very common. You see them on a lot of projects. And uh, I've used the same products with McGann Construction. And I gotta say that their installers are excellent. I mean, a huge part of how it looks at the end of the day is how well it's put on the building and detailed. So um, panel joints have to be carefully done, how they cut the edges. Um, you know, and just, uh, just the consistency, quality of insulation really helps to make sure it lasts a long time and looks great.
Thanks, Adam. I think insulation probably for just about any product would be uh, is key. So I appreciate that. Uh, other questions from board members regarding?
I just want to call out one um quick thing. And I really appreciated that, that slide you had, Megan, on um the local businesses and what kind of they're looking for right now and what they're willing to pay. And I'll add to that list that we have a hotel that will be opening shortly. And um, when we heard from, yeah, it was, it was the other hotel developer across the highway, but he shared what they would be paying their staff. And it's right in, in the ranges of those slides up to and including the manager role would probably make, I think he said fifty to sixty thousand a year. So um, I just put out there, add that to the list. Um, I think that was really impactful, Megan. So I thank you for doing that research.
Are there questions for Megan or Adam or discussion on this?
Make a motion that we approve um the general development plan for Moving Out Incorporated for uh Glen Grove. A one-hundred unit apartment project proposed on parcel zero seven one one zero four three zero 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 six zero. Zero seven one one zero four three zero zero one seven and zero seven one one zero four three zero zero two eight zero.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
You're gonna motion second, Jeff and Paul? Any further discussion? Having, is there?
With the conditions and staff reports?
Yes. Sorry. With conditions from the staff reports, yeah.
Paul, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Motion second to include the conditions with staff. Um, and they still have their, you know, very detailed plan, including lighting and everything else that, that'll come back through uh, through uh staff and as well as the board. So um, any further discussion on the motion? Having heard then, all those in favor?
Hi, hi.
All right. Anybody opposed?
Hi.
Anybody abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Thanks, Adam. All right. And then we'll move on to uh item B is discuss and consider a force conditionally use permit for Dolphin Swim Academy to allow an indoor instructional land use, in this case, swim school on lot number fifteen in the Cottage Grove Commerce Park. This was approved by the planning commission. Um, and I don't know if anyone from Dolphin is on, sticking with us.
Hi, John.
Oh, yeah, Brittany's on.
Yep, I'm here.
All right. Um, no feedback from public, uh, other than prior feedback, which is generally fa- uh favorable. And the board has received um all that prior to this as well as commissioned it too. So uh, Brittany, if you want to kind of walk us through uh your plan for lot fifteen and your swim school, that'd be great.
Yep. So I am Brittany Moley, the owner of Dolphin Swim Academy. We are looking to build a swim school on lot fifteen. Um, I have my team on um Joe and Katie, I believe. Um, and potentially Jesse are on to help answer questions and show um some of the drawings that we have here. Uh, we are a learn to swim program. We will have community access for like lap swim, open swim, um, as well as birthday parties. But primarily it's a learn to swim program. Uh, that'll be our main business.
Um, and yeah, I can take it from there. Um, hi, everyone. My name's uh Joe Gallagher. I'm the lead architect on this project. Um, I know some of you have seen um this presentation before. I'm gonna just uh attempt to share my screen, maybe not. Oh, yeah, the big green icon that says share screen. All right. Is it sharing? Yep. All right. Um, so just uh really quick, I guess, to um orient everyone, you have um Landmark Drive running north, south, uh limestone pla- limestone pass running east, west. Um, entrances off of both. Um, there are plans in the future. Um, you know, two, three years down the road to have an additional uh second building on this parcel, um, which we will once again go through this whole process. So um, what you're seeing in gray is future. Um, every other parking that is in white would be for this phase of the project. Um, jumping into the floor plan, um, what you see in yellow is essentially the public areas. Um, as you enter the space, um, you will be looking through uh the central lobby area into the swimming area. Um, directly behind you would be an office area and check-in area for the swimmers. Um, directly behind you would be an office area and check-in area for the swimmers. Um, they will then progress into a shared family um locker room arrangement with um individual private changing areas, um, which then has direct access out to the swim deck. Um, there will be seating for parents in the lobby area. Um, we are talking about additional seating out on the deck space as well. Um, we have plenty of room for that to happen and not obstruct the six-foot requirement that we have. Um, the nice thing about this is there are doors, excuse me, directly from this central space into the pool area. Brittany has talked about opening this up potentially to the public to allow for parties, to allow for swimming events. Um, and so, you know, this kind of functions as both a um swimming instruction as well as that opportunity for um swim parties, whatnot. Um, there is, there are two on-deck uh multi-headed deck showers, um, you know, um, to take care of children prior to getting into the pool, um, or any pool-related accidents that may happen. Um, and then on the northern side of the building is the equipment area. Um, that is separated from obviously all of the public functions, um, external chlorine um drop-off and external entrance into the equipment space in general to alleviate any of that um traffic having to come through the building itself. So just in general, I'm actually gonna just go to um the rendering here that everyone's pretty much seen. Um, we're looking at hardy board, um fiber cement panel on the front. Um, I'm just gonna call it that public zone that you saw, the lobby area and the locker rooms. Um, the rear portion, which is the, the pool, um, will have a, you know, pre-finished metal siding with concealed fasteners, um, as was requested by the Architectural Ed-Hoc Committee. And then a manufactured stone veneer base to wrap around the front area. Um, these materials um fall in line with the um covenants of the Commerce Park, and so we wanted to really adhere to those um materials as best as we could. And um I guess just a final image, I don't know if you're seeing uh the images of the people on here, but just looking um north back up towards the Summit Building, um, where this facility would be located. And I, I'll leave it at that, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to address.
Any questions for Brittany or Joe? Again, uh, I made the comment to, you've heard it already. Uh, I wish this facility was here when I was a young parent, uh, cause we uh slept our kids off to swim classes outside of Cottage Grove, so this would be a nice addition uh to, to the village, I think.
I know I, I seconded that as well last week, just um having purchased a home in the town of Cottage Grove. Um, we only live about eight minutes from here and we have a, a soon-to-turn-one-year-old this Thursday, and we're very excited to get her in the pool soon, so um Brit- Brittany has heard me talk way too much about that, so.
Alright, so we turn over to board for questions, comments?
Brittany and Joe, when you say you're opening it up to the community, I heard birthday parties or potential user groups. Are you guys looking at like a membership base for lap swim or a drop-in fee for lap swim? Uh, you looking at daytime for that, evenings? And then the other question I would have, um, in that place of inclusion, uh, people that have chronic disease, you guys looking at doing any specific programming at that level? We did have somebody reach out, um, that had fibromyalgia, you know, other chronic disease like diabetes, um, cancer survivors. Any programs of those, of that nature?
Uh, nothing specific. Um, we could definitely have, if they have an aquatic therapist, come on in and work with them. Um, as long as nothing is a communicable, spreadable disease, um, they're welcome to use the pool. Um, there's obviously state health guidelines, um, you know, you can't come in if you have any open sores or wounds. Um, some certain medical conditions might, you know, be harmful in the water or accelerate some symptoms. Um, so anyone with certain conditions or seeking cancer treatments would definitely need uh medical um permission and making sure they're healthy and fit for it. Um, we will, you know, have a chairlift and have it accessible for them as well. But we won't have like specific therapy times, um, but they are welcome to use it with a therapist during our open times. Um, right now, we're just looking at daily rates. There's also punch passes to, you know, kind of save on, you know, buying like ten passes at once, but there's no monthly membership right now.
So would you say the day passes or the punch passes, would that be specific for lap swimmers?
Yep, that'd be specific for like lap swim and specific for such as like family swim. So like a family, you know, bringing in their kids just to play versus like a single open swim lap swim rate. We'll have different points for that.
Thank you. Other questions from board members?
Um, there was some staff comments, I believe, and architectural review looked everything over and it meets all the criteria for Commerce Park.
Yeah, so there's a Village Action Report in your packet that, you know, recaps both the ARC and the Plan Commission. Um, it's actually two separate agenda items here. The first one would be the conditional use permit and uh we're recommending approval of that without any conditions. Then the site plan, um, if someone wants to make a motion that references the action report, that would include the conditions um from the ARC and Plan Commission as well as MSA's engineering conditions. But um as long as they meet those conditions, they'll be, you know, fully for playing.
And these were both approved by Plan Commission last week too, just a reference for everybody. Any other questions or comments?
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed conditional use permit for Dolphin Swim Academy to allow for indoor institutional land use or swim school on lot fifteen in the Cottage Grove Commerce Park.
Alright, thank you.
I'll second.
Second from Troy. Uh, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Alright.
Okay, I'll, I'll make an, um, also a motion that we um approve the application for Dolphin Swim Academy for approval of the site plan for the swim school on lot fifteen of the Cottage Grove Commerce Park.
A second.
And is that with the action?
With the conditions as written in Village Action Report, yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir, and then Jeff, you're good with that?
Yep.
Okay, we got a motion second then to approve the site plan, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Thanks, Brittany, and thanks, Joe, for, for sticking with us this evening.
Perfect, thank you, everyone.
Alright, then we move on to Police Commission. Um, Chief, I think this would be you, I believe.
Hi, John, yeah, that was uh just a meeting. Uh, we're required to have two meetings a year. We really don't have anything to do at these meetings because we're not hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting anybody, but we are required by the law, bylaws to have the meetings, so that's what we did. So I just spend that time basically updating members on what we do at the police department, uh, things that are going on in the area right now and basically let them know what we do as a commission and what their duties are. But other than that, no business was really done during those meetings.
Alright, thanks, Chief. Alright, then we'll move on to Parks and Record Forest Street Committee, Heidi?
Alright, so Parks met last week. Uh, we discussed the twenty twenty-one budget, which will come forward soon with all of our budget work. Um, we always have an update on Bakken Park, which we'll hear um about some more in just a moment. Um, and then I don't know if anyone from the Boy Scouts is on, if we wanna talk about that right away before the longer MSA, or we can just do that after the Bakken Park, what do you think, Sean?
Uh, no one is here from Boy Scouts.
Okay, so I guess um then I can turn it over to Sean and Dan from MSA to talk about the Bakken Park update.
Go ahead.
Um, thanks, Heidi, and uh thanks, everyone, for, for having us on tonight. Um, Sean, Kevin and Matt asked me to give a quick couple-minute update on the project um and as things have progressed um over the course of the summer. Um, let me share my screen. There we go. Um, so the project kicked off um in early April. Um, this photo was kind of mid to late April as the contractor was getting um building foundations in the ground. Um, as of September, um, as we can see here, the building construction is nearly complete. Um, starting to work on additional site amenities, tables and drinking fountain benches, you can see in the foreground, um, as well as Sean in the red flying the drone. Splash pad as uh current um condition as of uh a couple of weeks ago. Um, splash pad itself started construction in earnest in kind of mid to late July. Um, and beginning of August, um, we can see in the top picture there, the embeds and all the underground um work was in. Um, and that kind of cream-colored section of the building is the mechanicals and it's where everything ties into. And then as of mid-September and getting into even earlier today, um, splash pad equipment was installed. Um, everything was tested and is now winterized for the year um in anticipation of final um Department of Safety and Professional Services review in the spring as well as um official licensing to open up um as a recycling splash pad in the spring. That decision was made mostly to prevent the need from bringing in and firing up the chemical systems just to be shut down a week later. And um having to store that all over the winter while um there was some ongoing construction and punchless work in the building. So kind of the general rundown, um, the building and shelter itself is kind of nearing substantial completion, which is ahead of the allotted timeframe in the contract of um May, which is uh right in line with the country, what the contractor proposed when they um started off. So Harmony's done a good job working with their subcontractors to keep everything on track. Um, they had pretty great weather throughout most of the summer to keep things going. And right now, the building is mostly in punchless items, uh, just kind of doing that final cleanup. Splash pad, I'd say the installation is basically complete. Um, the features were tested in early September and um Sean and Tim were out there today with um the splash pad contractor winterizing for the year. Um, overall remaining work, um, the asphalt trail um segment um through the middle of the park, site grading, seating and landscaping have yet to be done. Um, we're finishing up and cleaning up parking lot margins and then general final cleaning and, and punchless items. Um, so all things considered, the project is on track to be basically complete in October. And as I mentioned, this is I gonna go, the splash pad is gonna be um licensed and inspected in spring. And um with any other kind of tally of current um project changes, we're still under budget by about two thousand dollars of the original contract amount. So um hoping for some cool um uh final pictures here um yet this fall and in the early spring when the grass and uh that is landscaping is kind of finalized, but um all things considered, uh, construction is gone fairly smoothly. And looking forward to, to being able to turn this over to Cottage Grove in spring next year. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any, otherwise, um, since it's getting late, can kick me out and keep the meeting going as well.
President.
Thank you, just wanted to say thank you.
If I can just kind of tag on a little bit to what uh Dan was talking about. Um, it's been a, it's been a unique uh project in the fact that we have really two contracts going on. We've got a general contractor in Harmony and this, all this stuff is in your, in your packet information, but um overseeing the shelter project a- as well as CRS, Commercial Recreation Specialists, doing splash pads. So it's been kind of unique that we have two different groups in there, but it's rent, it's went uh really pretty good. Uh, we haven't really had any major issues, as Dan mentioned, we're still a little bit under budget. Um, also, as Dan mentioned, we did do the winterization process today, so that was interesting learning that. Uh, a lot of uh um RV antifreeze going into that thing. So that, that was good and we'll move forward with getting our certifications um in twenty twenty-one. Um, one thing, uh, way back in, in March, February, March, we were taking a look at this project cost and uh one thing, we, we had to kind of look at things as, as want versus need stuff and, and to be mindful of the budget, we pulled something, we pulled basically the, the uh shade structures out of the project. Um, and just, again, just to, to maintain the budget that the Village Board set on the project and we're, those were roughly about thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand dollars. So we're gonna, we're gonna look at, uh, everything is, is done for those with the exception that we haven't purchased them, but all the underground stuff that's done, the concrete and things are there. So we'll reevaluate that and look at things once we get rolling next year and see if those uh shade structures are actually needed and, and wanted. Um, if, if so, well, I think the best course would be to look at possibly our park development fund uh so that that money didn't have to be budgeted for or come off of the levy. Um, also, we are starting to talk about a grand opening. Uh, I wanna make this big and huge, and if I had my way, we'd have Def Leppard there performing, but I'm not sure that we can get uh enough funding to back that up. But uh we are working on that and we really wanna do something great for the, for the residents and, and our surrounding area just because this is a really cool project and something that is, that is uh going to be enjoyed for, for a long time.
Alright, thanks, Sean, thank you. Um, any questions from board members?
I just wanted to thank Sean and Dan for that information and the update, and it really is a beautiful facility um and a great asset for our community. Draw people in and keep community members here to uh spend time together at this um beautiful park. So um I'm excited about our grand opening next year.
Alright, good. Um, and then as Heidi mentioned, there is a discuss and consider suspending the ordinance two thirty dash three uh on September twenty-fifth through the twenty-sixth. Uh, and then again on October eleventh to allow the Boy Scout Troop one forty-five to occupy the lion shelter at Fireman's Park during the park closed hours. Sean, any comments on that? I know you guys had mentioned there weren't any Boy Scouts on the line, it is getting late. Um, I know, but they're all in bed.
Uh, this is something, President Williams, that we've done over the last couple of years. Uh, just came forward recently, it did not make it on our Parks Agenda. Um, Miss Maybe, Sue Maybe just got dates to me last week. Uh, we kind of talked through the COVID restriction stuff and as I put in the packet, there is some information there that they are going to be um adhering to twenty-five or less and making sure that, that the kids are socially distanced and masks. So uh as I mentioned before, the board has not had an issue with this.
Alright, any questions?
Just.
Go ahead.
Troy. Just, just for clarity, are, are they gonna stay overnight then there, is that right, Sean?
Yes, Troy, they are. They're gonna.
And so, okay, and, and each kid is gonna have their own tent then for the social distancing?
That's, that's what I'm understanding, I can clarify that with, with Sue, but I would assume, I mean, she knows all of the guidelines, we discussed those thoroughly. I did not ask that question, but that is a fair question and I can ask that if you'd like.
Yeah, just, just to maintain the social distancing, I don't see how two kids could be in the same tent, uh, even if it's a six-person tent, why, you, you've gotta have distance between and, you know, one needs to get out and use the restroom or whatever. Uh, I'll make the motion to approve uh based on the fact that they're gonna maintain that social distancing and, and each kid would have their own tent.
If, if it's okay with the board, I will follow up with Miss Maybe tomorrow and I will send you guys all an email. And just let you know exactly how that is going to, that is going to go.
I'll second.
All right, motion second and. Odd note, there might actually be some siblings in there who can probably stay in the same tent, so just keep that in mind. Any other discussion on this item?
Could the motion be more to, in case, in case Sean were to have to come back with an update, could it be more to reflect the. Current COVID or whatever we would want to say. Precautions or something like that, Troy, would you feel comfortable with that? Or do you want to be specific, each kid has their own tent?
I, I guess I feel like we need to be specific in, in that if we leave it too open, we're, we're trusting. Their ability to do social distancing and I just think of kids and the last thing in their mind is not standing six feet away from. Another kid, John brings up a great point that family members may have two people in the same tent and I'm okay with that, but. Otherwise I just, again, I'm concerned about the safety of our, our kids and, and any parents or. Scout folks that might be there.
So maybe it's more each family unit has their own tent. Whatever their unit consists of, if it's just one kid, two kids or a parent. But I'm happy.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that Sarah.
Most of you okay with that adjustment?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, we have a motion second then, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. I'm hoping they have dry weather. Nice fall nights. Then moving on to Deer Grove EMS. And Sarah or Troy on this one? I believe. And then this is discussing consider their 2021 budget and as recommended by the EMS commission, so there's. Some stuff that went on related to budgets to them and it's obviously perfect timing for us.
I can start trying then if you want to chime in with filling in any of the gaps I might have missed. So you'll see attached in the package, the, the budget that was approved by the commission last week Thursday. I would say the chief and, and Mandy really worked hard to try to take the feedback from this village board in mind in making a. A budget proposal that really uses the LTE idea. During, trying to schedule them during the hours that we seem to have. The highest need and it does include also an increase in the LTE hourly wage. Troy, you'll have to fill in some of the other pieces because I was, my connection was kind of cutting in and out during all of the conversations, so the piece around the ambulance, maybe you can fill us in on?
Sure, sure, so I guess the LTE conversation, part of this conversation is they're looking at adding 84 hours a week of LTE service. Or LTE. Services, trying to hit the high times of calls, high times of calls are Monday and Tuesday, eight to five. Friday, 2pm to midnight and Sundays noon to 8pm. Trying to capitalize any, any, you know, the lower the chances of any missed calls. The ambulance is included in this, the chassis would be a 2021 purchase. And the balance of the ambulance would be a 2022 to try to lessen the blow. I, I did work with the chief. Quite honestly, I voted no on this at the meeting, but in, in, in reflecting back. A 33.32% increase. If you take the ambulance purchase out, which we have money set aside for, for the $100,000, it's a 14.2%. Increase, so it's, it's, it's not as. As bad as it looks on the, on the. Included budget that we saw, I think other communities don't have capital versus operating separated. A couple other notes on this is that. Calls were up a little bit for the month, we're still down for the year. And we're looking at setting up a committee or agenda items to set up a committee for EMS strategy. Staffing needs moving forward to try to prepare ourselves for, for the future. And we are blessed with the chief on this evening and chief, I would offer to have you speak to or answer any questions. In regards to the budget or, or anything else, maybe including the agreement that we have presently.
It's like Chief Lang is actually sharing the budget right now. So. Chief, you want to, you might be on mute, I don't know. You're trying to speak.
Yeah, I had three screens and I couldn't figure out where the unmute button was, I think I've unmuted myself now.
Chief, are you having fun so far? It's been a great meeting.
It has, it's been enlightening on. Building products and construction design and all that stuff, it's, it's thrilling. Yeah, so does any, anybody have any specific questions about what we proposed for the budget?
I just need just a comment to, I'd like to see try to leverage the LTE model. To see if this, how this makes an impact and going after those times where we have, where we right now currently have higher. Higher call volumes and then, you know, that gives us some data to work with as all the communities involved. In order to see where else we need to take this, you know, is it? Is it the next step, you know, more LTEs, more paramedics, whatever, but the data will kind of. Call that out for all the communities involved, I think, so appreciate the commission for, for considering that. Are there other, any other questions for, questions for Chief Lang, you sticking with us? Or comments on this, on the budget overall?
I just have a quick question, chief, the ambulance 100,000 for 2021, how, how much should, how much is planned then for 2022? So we can adjust our capital?
Yeah, through our discussions, we're, we've, we've set our total budget at looking at to be no more than the 245,000 total for the ambulance. Unfortunately, we've discovered that since our last purchase. There's an average of 5% increases per year on the cost of the ambulance build, so what we, what we bought in the low 200s. In years past is coming in much more expensive than we anticipated, so we're going to go through, we've got the detailed budget build out. And, or of, of the ambulance and we'll go through and trim that down to be as little as possible. Also, part of the plan was to evaluate. Two of our part, or two things, our partnership with the EMS Association to see if they could fund some portion of the. Actual ambulance build and to see where do we stand with fund balance to see if there was a. A way for us to use some of those funds to, to cover some of the costs of the ambulance. So I've, I've committed to being no more than 245. Which I believe was your budget number for, for the whole build?
Yeah, I think, I think we've, I think we had. 130,000 if I remember right, in there for our, for our portion, so. We should be sitting pretty good.
Yeah, I've, we're working with Demers, which is the manufacturer of our current two ambulances as, as a. To whittle down the price, but out of curiosity, I have gone to a separate manufacturer just to see what. A similar build would be and it was even more than Demers still, so. Maybe I should have been an ambulance builder instead of a, of a paramedic, I'm not sure.
So just to clarify then that, that line item. As far as. The Deer Grove EMS budget is concerned, that capital line item will be approximately 145,000 for 2022?
Yes, no more than, I will even define it a little bit more for you.
Sure, I won't hold you to it as long as it's really close.
Well, I mean.
Thank you.
We'll work at it.
But obviously chief, there's some advantages of having consistency in equipment and where it's laid out and. I think it's great that you checked out other places and I'm sure that these materials and everything else and skilled labor to build and continues to, to go up. And they take for forever to build, so you know, they're, they're got a lot of moving parts as well.
Yeah, and as we use the, the LTE staffing model, maintaining consistency between ambulances. Is, is going to be imperative for us so that. We can have our staff know that what, no matter where they work in a Deer Grove ambulance, that the equipment they need to. Acquire is in the same spot every time.
All right, any other questions for chief regarding the budget?
I, I guess just a couple of other things as a side note is that they would rotate the new ambulance. And the backup ambulance more frequently so that we're, we're not wearing out the newer units faster. Really, right now our backup is truly a backup that we only need it, use it on an as is needed basis. And, and chief, is there anything else in regards to the agreement that, that we might want to just again, it's not a budget item, but there's some thoughts that you might have to. Work with this and could you also show the budget without the ambulance in it just for an operational side only? To share with our board?
Yeah, that's the one I'm sharing right now, I figured. Packet that had the capital in it, so the only one I shared was with the, the $100,000 removed. So what you see on the screen will be our operating budget for. 2021.
Can you increase, can you increase the size where's chief, it, it's. Yeah, there you go, and, and I just go down to the bottom, you know, portion there of our percentage, can you even increase a little bit more, please?
Chief, I'm guessing it's just a typo I've, I've noticed on, on some of the budgets that it shows a 2019 contribution and not 2020. I, I think that's the correct amount, so I think just the, the header there is wrong.
Yeah, I'm guessing this right here just didn't get changed to 2020.
Yeah, those numbers look accurate.
And I, and I guess I would echo President Williams' statement is that we hope that with this model, we can. Capture many of our calls and make it a workable model, but we still need to keep our eye on. The fact that. When we respond across the district, it drastically increases response time and that we are on a trend to have more missed calls for service. The goal is to capture as, as many of those as we can, but using this, this current model, at least in 2021, I don't know that capturing all of them would be possible. But certainly we'll do our best to schedule in a manner that will capture the majority of them. As far as things going forward. That Troy is kind of leading me to, to discuss is that the. Intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement is due for renewal in 2022. And, and things to just consider of, I don't know, last meeting I got a little blindsided by the talks of. We want our own ambulance and we want to make our own response, we don't feel like we're getting. What we pay for out of the agreement and since I've had some opportunity to reflect on that. To be honest, it would be very difficult for you to, to get the service that you're getting from us for any less than a million dollars. As you having to be the single payer, you can go a little less than that, but for instance, the budget request for the Marshall area EMS district. For one paid full-time staff member per day at the advanced DMT level is roughly the same that you're paying right now for. Your portion of one plus ambulance at the paramedic level. So the suggestion would be to work within the IGA to identify the things that would, would help you to feel like you have more of a say. So for instance, I know other IGAs throughout the county have a 100% approval for the budget, so that. Of the communities in the district that all of them would have to approve a budget rather than a majority. To work with the. Funding model to not just represent. Equalized value, that there's other components to the, the funding formula that also includes population and calls for service. Will that result in a, in a big shift in the amount that the village of Cottage Grove pays? I suspect that it won't be big, but I also haven't plugged anything into calculations to know how much of a shift that could affect. But, but again, I feel like that as a district, we have a good thing going and that we would like to do what we can to keep it together, obviously. And, and provide the best service we can to the residents of the Cottage Grove, Deerfield, Pleasant Springs area.
All right, thanks chief, any other questions for chief? Comments regarding the budget? Or a motion to approve the budget as presented?
I'll move to approve the 2021 DG EMS budget as recommended by the commission.
All right, first some sec, Sarah, is there, is there a second?
A second.
Heidi, any further discussion? All right, having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Thanks chief for hanging with us. You can shut the lights out, all right, moving on then to reports from village officers. First one up is myself, there were a number of nominations as we continue to try to fill the new committees. And I've listed them out here. Dan Olson asked to be on the, on the housing task force for present school. Nomination for Jeff and Paul to be on the housing task force. Nominations for Michael Rosemary to be on the ADHAC Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. Nomination for Sarah, again, that same committee, nomination for Troy to be on law enforcement committee. And we continue, in fact, we're going to meet staff tomorrow to talk about the housing task force, we've got a number of. Notes out to folks and we're just going to try to figure out how we. Connect with them and see where we can get the rest of that slate of, of candidates in there, so we get a, a group, that group going. Any questions with any nominees?
Can I make a motion to approve all as presented?
I'll second.
I think we can, I would leave that to Rick if he's still on. We're, we're good with that, I think we are.
Yeah, I, I think that's a valid motion.
Okay, so we have a first by Troy, second by Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained, motion carries, thanks everybody, thank you for volunteering as well.
Hey John?
Yep.
Do you still have openings for trustees or did you fill them all now?
I still have one opening for. Where is it? The Emergency Preparedness Committee.
Oh. Okay.
That's the one that's open right now unless. Again, the board decides that they wanted to add, you know, another representative on one of these committees from, from, from the board. And which again, we're just going by what you guys suggested and you know, as people got reached. And, you know, as people got reached back out to me, um, and I'm putting them in their spots. And if you have interest, Melissa, you and I can chat later too as well.
I was just curious, not interested right now.
Well, it's just emergency par- preparedness is the, the one open spot right now for, for trustee, um, that, that we need. And I was going to send out a note to everybody, uh, after this to see, because we, I want to get going with, uh, lieutenant on that. Uh, that includes myself and then, uh, some, some, uh, staff members. As well as another board representative.
Thanks.
Hmm? All right, uh, Rick, do you have anything? I don't know if Larry's on. I saw him earlier, but you were, you're connected and.
Yeah, I have nothing to report.
All right. And then, uh, COVID update, we usually goes through the list of staff, so we'll start with Matt.
I'm happy to report no update from my point of view, but I know some brothers, other staff have various, uh, things to share.
All right. And then Chief Labor, if you're still out with us?
I'm here, John. Uh, nothing to report. Nobody's sick at the department. No family members are sick, so we're doing good. Officers are still wearing masks, when in contact with the public and everything's status quo.
All right. Thank you, chief. Uh, Lieutenant Wagner? If he's on yet.
Yep, I got, um, I got nothing to report, John. Just the same thing I did. I, uh, submitted all the forms for the reimbursement. I'm just waiting to hear back from the state. I'll see anyone's got questions for me.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Um, J J?
Nothing to report here.
All right. Very good. Um, and then Sean?
Uh, only because J J said I can't talk anymore. Uh, nothing to report COVID-wise. We've had uh, a little flurry over the weekend about getting some garbage cans out, so we're going to take care of that. Um, just some good stuff to report. I, I could have done this before. Miracle Field started as of today. Um, they started digging that, so they, they've received, uh, uh, an anonymous donor for, of a hundred and twenty thousand. That's a matching grant, so, um, they're looking really, uh, looking really good and think that they're going to fund this project yet, yet this year. And also, real quickly, the Whittle Run Playground started today as well. So we're looking to have that wrapped up in the next couple of days.
All right. Wonderful.
John, if I might interrupt, um, I, I did promise that we would have, uh, staff would have some updates. And I know Lisa, Lisa does, if you wouldn't mind, uh, turning it over to her.
Oh, sure.
For the last, because it's good news.
All right, Lisa.
Thanks, Matt. Um, yes, I have great news to report. The, um, grant application that you approved, um, for me to apply for, for the Civic of Tech and, and Civic Life, we were awarded ten thousand dollars. Um, so that is great news. That will allow us to purchase a DS two hundred and an express boat and have, um, some money for, um, extra coworkers training and salaries on election day. So it was well worth the effort of applying.
And Lisa, does that, is that machine available already in November?
Yes, um, so that was one of the things before I even went about, I contacted E S and S to see, um, the availability for both those pieces of equipment. And yes, we will have them for November.
That is great news.
And, and Lisa's working on, uh, the plan for how best, um, to handle uh, the election as far as, um, doing it safely indoors or continuing with, um, how the last couple have gone, um, outdoors. So she's working through that as we speak.
All right. Matt, did I miss anyone else?
No, I think, I think we have it all covered.
All right. I'll, I'll make sure I at least send her the rotation too. And I'll probably put her first, just because I did that last and forgot her. Um, all right, then, um, moving on to communication, Melissa, it's business, the, uh, consider of approval vouchers. Uh, anybody have any questions or comments on those?
I'll move to approve.
All right.
Second.
Melissa, first, second, Sarah. Any other, uh, comments or discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Uh, correspondence, I shared all the emails that you guys had received as well. And then a couple addition, uh, that, uh, came in after the wire that, uh, Lisa shared two of those will all go in the record, um, as far as, uh, correspondence. I don't know if anybody has anything else. All right. Upcoming community events? Does anybody have anything coming up?
This is the ways out.
Pardon?
This is the ways out, but the chamber, I'm on the Christmas in the Grove Planning Committee with the chamber. And we started planning some events for this year, um, that will be socially distanced or virtual. Um, so keep an eye out for that first weekend in December.
All right. Super. Thank you, Heidi. And, um, I know that, uh, staff is working with the P T O on trying to do something for uh, Halloween, uh, as well. Uh, the P T O has come forward with some ideas. Um, and I know that it, Matt, that, uh, we've reached out and we're trying to sort that out with, uh, the various, uh, uh, staff members that would, would need to kind of, um, weigh in on that, correct?
Yes, I, I believe, um, Dan and J J are, are working on that and, um, they will, uh, send an email to the board when, when things are finalized. And if there's something that comes up that would need a board approval, we can, we can do it that way, but, um, as, as far as what she was looking to do, uh, we don't have a, a permit for that, so not, nothing that the board would need to approve at this time.
All right. Perhaps an update at our next meeting. We do have, uh, a couple of meetings before Halloween. I just recalled that and wanted to mention it. Um,
President Wood?
Yes, Sean.
Um.
I thought J J told you you couldn't talk anymore tonight.
I know, but we forgot Deb.
Oh, I'm sorry. We did forget Deb and she's hanging on for us too. Uh, she's got a lot going on right now with the budget stuff. Deb, was there any updates from you?
Not anything exciting. Thanks, Sean.
Okay.
I did want to let everybody know that board review is this week. Um, right now, we only have two possible attendees, which I think is pretty awesome in a year of a revaluation. Um, Nick with Associated Appraisal is still hopeful that he can speak with those two applicants and try and come to a, an agreement prior to board review, but we'll see. But I will report at the next meeting how, how it all has gone.
All right. Thanks, Deb. Sorry, I forgot you. Um, all right. And that board review is Thursday for anybody that's interested. Uh, future agenda items.
Sorry, John, if anyone's interested in hearing errands in my, uh, presentation, again, we're going to be presenting to the chamber on Thursday at noon. So you could grab a lunch and sit in front of the computer and hear it all again.
All right. I'm sure that we get some good questions to come in your rest of the way. Um, future agenda items, there's some things, uh, going through, obviously, plan right now. Uh, all the normal stuff that's flowing through and then, uh, a whole lot of things around the budget. Um,
Did we add the piece that Abby talked about this morning or this morning, whenever the meeting, whenever the meeting started, um, the food cart to the transient?
Uh, yeah, I think that would probably, unless the board feels otherwise, I think it'll bounce through, um, the, the ordinance committee first.
Yeah, um, that meeting is on the thirtieth of this month, so I can take it to ordinance. Um, I'll put it on that agenda and then potentially we could see it back here shortly after that. With their recommendation.
Sounds good. Thank you. Just didn't want to get lost.
No, thanks, Sarah.
Is it, is it an ordinance or is it just a permit? Like, would it go to ordinance review for you to review?
There, there is an ordinance, yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. Good. Thanks.
Hmm.
And, and then, uh, we'll, we'll also finish off the consultant and service provider reviews. There's, um, a few more, uh, Ruta Bush, Baker Tilly, Computer Magic, our I T consultants and, um, Associated Appraisal.
All not in the same night, so just, just to note that.
Well, no, no, they are, um.
Yeah, talk about this, Matt.
Been trying to, um, whittle away at them.
All right, I understand.
Yeah.
All right, um, then the only thing we have left is adjournment. Anybody want to make?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
First motion. And to that end, to adjourn this meeting.
Talking.
All right. Pause the first, second, uh, by Troy. It's non-debatable. All those in favor?
Hi.
I like the comedy at the end. Everybody have a great night.